All right, good evening, welcome to the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, August 26th. Let's do, I think everyone is here in person, so no need for a roll call tonight. All Select Board members are present. Just running through the agenda tonight, 7:00 we're going to begin with community input, then appointments and resignations. At 7:10 we're going to discuss personnel policies with Aubrey, who is online. 7:30 we're going to have our road maintenance community feedback forum, followed by Tecton Fire Station presentation at 8:30. 9:15 close the special town meeting warrant, then the town administrator report, review of warrants and minutes, liaison reports, and community inputs. So with that, I'll open it up to community input. Seeing none in the room, I'll put it online to see if anyone has any comments initially for community. Okay, seeing none, we'll move along to appointments and resignations, and I believe there's just one notification tonight.
Yes, we're notifying you of the appointment of Sam Fisher as a DPW laborer and driver. Sam has the pre-recorded experience, works currently for a landscaping company, does a significant amount of plowing, also has a hoisting license, which is unique for applicants these days, so comes qualified and ready to go, recommended by Jim, who's here if you want to confirm, and ready to begin.
You recommend him? You're here, I'll take advantage. Great, very good, and there's no action needed on that, this is just a notification. And with that is, I see Aubrey online, so we can move along right to Personnel Policies discussion with Aubrey in the upper-left corner of our screen. Hi Aubrey.
Hi everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Yes, so thank you, this is the second round of Personnel Policy request. This one is going to be a little different in structure because there are a lot of different operational updates. I do, I would like to request that this is just an overview of what we could dig further into for these operational updates, and if you're looking for specific language, which ones we should move forward to. So this memo gives an outline of the different updates, and I'll give more explanation as to why. So first of all, clarifying leave policies, for example, holiday pay, vacation accruals, sick leave, personal leave, making sure that not only is it consistent, but it's, that it makes sense as to why that has been in place, and if we can clarify that. Holiday pay, it's not clear what officially appropriately absent means, so we need to make sure that we're fairly providing holiday pay as necessary. We are making it so vacation accrual would start July 1 for all employees. This is also for operational consistency. A lot of times what happens is employees aren't aware that they need to use certain vacation by a certain anniversary date, and by making it July 1, everybody's informed, everybody knows to look for that. And what we've been doing is prorating anybody for that July 1 date that started recently with the anticipation of hopefully making this operational update. So that'll make it just consistent and fair for everybody.
And you said, yeah, for the vacation accrual, the July 1st day, people, obviously if they started six months into the year, it would just be prorated, so it's not like-
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, and so-
Yeah, the difficulty, sorry Aubrey, was with the accruals, essentially Kelly would have to remember, and she did, each person's anniversary date, and make sure those accruals were tracked in an Excel spreadsheet. So we use an online system now, which made that better, but making everybody start on July 1 and prorating it allows that once-a-year update, rather than relying on a person to handle 20, 30, 40 updates a year.
Right, so she was managing dozens of employees' accruals, and so Bamboo HR has helped with some of that, but like Ryan said, this will make it so it's a lot easier in the system to update every year.
Yep.
And vacation is fair for everybody.
And that's not something people would have an issue with?
So far, we haven't had any concerns for anybody, so we've been doing this for at least two years now of, you know, we're going to prorate as of the July 1st date and reset, and nobody's had any concerns with that, any new employee.
Okay.
So, sick leave, making sure we understand who's eligible. Some folks might qualify for sick leave even though they have PTO, so we need to make sure that we're defining what that is and who qualifies, and making sure that it's provided appropriately. Personal leave, there's conflicting definitions of full-time, and so that's one of the things we need to clarify. And then, right now it shows that full-time employees have to request at least one-hour increments, which isn't even something that people often do anyways, and then part-timers can request half-hour increments, and for the accountant, this really doesn't matter what the increments are, so there's not really a need to make those minimums, so just trying to clarify that in the policy. And then reconsidering restrictions on coinciding personal leave with vacation or holiday leave, unless there's a real concern with doing that, it just makes sense for employees to be able to do that. Do you want to scroll down a little? So insurance and benefits, because, you know, we are adjusting what the split is, making sure that that's referenced, that it can be changed by the Select Board and Town Meeting, or Select Board really, annually, so just referencing that, so we don't have to update the personnel policies every time, and also note that the retirees may pay a different rate than active employees. Making sure, again, kind of what we were talking about, making sure we can properly classify employees, what part-time means, what full-time means, who's eligible for what and benefits. Adding insurance coverage details, so making sure there's a policy in place of if you start or leave, what that means for benefits and when you're entitled. Let's say if you leave at a certain day in the month, are you entitled for the end of that month, right, or are you, is your insurance done that day? So making sure that that's clarified in the personnel policies.
Aubrey, this is Christine, how much do the, what is the contribution percentage right now?
So right now, the town covers 58%.
Okay.
For active employees.
And do we really adjust it annually? I mean, I would think that as an employee, I want some predictability in my, you know, runway.
So, the history, this started before I was here, but the history is that it was 50/50. It moved up to 55%, and the goal is to increase it 1% because budget-wise, that's the most feasible approach. When it comes, when you come to, when you look at comparisons with other towns, we're pretty low, actually. Most towns are at least 60%.
So most towns cover 60% of employees' insurance?
Yeah, and some years ago, I forget how many years ago, it was, we wanted to get up to a more competitive number, but financially, they didn't want to just make that change wholesale, so it's been stepped up, and that's been communicated. So that's why it's adjusted every year, it's on a, kind of a pre-communicated set plan versus an ad hoc decision every year.
We're still marching towards 60/40, right? Where are we at now?
That's what we've been talking about, yeah.
Plus, it changes every year anyways, right? Like this last year, this last fiscal year, it increased by 15.4%. So it is changing every year for employees, so-
The cost.
The cost, not the whole cost.
Yeah, so that extra percent, you know, it doesn't, it is kind of arbitrary for an employee, because it's going to increase for them either way.
Increases, yeah, for everybody.
And just to highlight-
Yes, for us too.
Highlight some of the operational concerns that Aubrey's discussing here. So if someone resigns their appointment on the first of the month, then their insurance would be carried, in theory, to the end of the month. So savvy employees do time their two weeks. The town does, and I don't really have a problem with it, but the town should know, or have some policy on when they want to accept or not someone's resignation. So a lot of times in your resignation letter, you'll say, "I'll gladly extend myself to July 1." Well, there's CBA agreements and other agreements that pay certain benefits when those dates start. Usually, we're not against that, but the town should be protecting itself against major liabilities with retirement dates, et cetera. So that we want two weeks, it's not always necessary.
Okay.
So compensation and allowances, and Ryan, if you don't mind scrolling down. So because the DPW and there's some certain police, part-time police officers that aren't kind of covered by a union contract, we need to make sure that they're being addressed in the personnel policies. So especially for the DPW, making sure that the policy for uniform clothing allowances is referenced in the personnel policies, right? When do they qualify? It might not be a specific dollar amount, but just making sure that, you know, people understand where to go. DPW overtime, there's been some conflicting information about when overtime comes in, kicks in. FLSA is for every, all hours, over 40 hours worked, not including sick leave, vacation time, right? So adding this to the policies to make sure that folks are getting overtime when they're actually earned. Again, non-union officers, making sure, because, you know, it's past practice of having the same detailed pay structures as union officers, but we don't have anything in place to support that. And then financial references, just making sure that we refer to any financial policies. We might not want to put them all in the personnel policies, but identify where to find that, that these policies do exist. So, because we do receive a lot of questions about any sort of financial policy for employees. Performance, promotions and resignations. So since I've started here, we've changed how we do the step increases, so now performance reviews, which were already in the policies, but now they're tied to the annual step increase. And then making sure promotions are identified, what the criteria are for posting for promotions, and just making, and the public posting requirements, making that a little more updated, making it so it's just on the website, just like we do for agendas and minutes now. It doesn't really make sense to have to physically post the job on, in the lobby, and nobody's looking at that. Resignation-
Sorry, Aubrey, quick question, this is Barney, the criteria for promotions is separate, really, from the outdated public posting requirement?
I think it's part of it too, it has its own requirement as well, so.
And what you're saying is we need to post opportunities for promotions? Is that what that's-
Right now, it's just outdated, because right now, I need to post it in the lobby of Town Hall, basically.
But is that an, you're posting an opening, or you're posting an announcement that someone has been promoted?
No, an opening, right? So opportunities for promotion. It's right now, just the way it's phrased doesn't really make sense.
Thank you, okay.
And what for promotions means, right? Because the way we're structured, and we're such a flat structure, that's kind of hard to identify sometimes.
Okay, thanks.
And then resignations, we can't force anybody to give a ten-day notice, we can't force them to do an exit interview, but standardizing the professional expectation will be helpful. It also can help us have some time to make sure all the processes are complete, making sure they have their final paycheck in order, that they're returning any equipment, and then it will encourage standardizing exit interviews, that is an expected part of the process. Again, you can legally enforce it, but making it a policy makes it so it's expected across town. Policy management, it's just a general one. We are now having everybody acknowledge the personnel policies every year, and there's a form on the town website to confirm that, and making sure that we have a link to that acknowledgement form in the personnel policies itself, explaining how the personnel policies are updated, what the process is, like, you know, we'll review annually, the Human Resources Department with the approval of the Select Board, and then making sure that there's a process in place of how we notify employees of any changes, and that will include emailing everybody, posting online, notifying union presidents, et cetera. So these are, there's a lot here, but basically this is making sure that there's clarity, so people are paid properly, that there's clarity in definitions, there's clarity in the processes, so if there's nothing new, really, but it's just making sure that it's just clearer, and this will really help the finance department especially, in making sure that we're paying people appropriately.
So Aubrey, in terms of work going forward, obviously there's a lot of, I'm guessing there's a lot of words behind all these bullet points in terms of the final policies. What are you looking at in terms of timeline, both to get these policies in shape, to bring them back to the Select Board, and how much time for us to review and approve them? And just trying to get a sense of overall timeframe for this work, this part of it?
I would say it would probably take a good two weeks or more to make sure that I have all the appropriate language if we were tackling all of these, and I would want to give you all at least a week or two to review everything.
I'm just doing mental math, because we have, I think, four or five meetings before the special town meeting, so-
I know.
I don't know if this is something we slot in for after special town meeting, or if time allows, it might be before a special town meeting. So I don't, we can kind of mentally put a placeholder somewhere for this.
We were hoping to get a little bit of feedback from you on anything that stood out to you as controversial, or something you wanted a lot more information on. Most of these are, while there's some policy discussion here, most of these are relatively common in the HR space.
I mean, is there anything that's not, not knowing other towns and other policies that's out of the ordinary, or is not consistent with what most other towns do in terms of we would be an outlier in some respect in any of these things? I mean, they all seemed pretty-
No, I don't believe so. Even asking for a resignation process, I think, is fairly common.
And are there financial implications for any of these?
Sure, especially with, like we mentioned with the insurance one, making a policy of what that means, you know, can make a financial impact. So if we, if you work any day of the month, then you get the benefit for that whole month, which has been standard practice, so it shouldn't change, but let's say somebody after me decides they don't want to do that anymore for the employee, to save some money, you know, there should be a policy in place to make sure we're consistent with that.
And you'll have a procedure in place to change those policies, at least that was acknowledged in here, which I think is great. I mean, I think this is just really good HR work, you know?
Yeah, I do too.
For, like, and this would apply to all town employees in terms of-
All non-bargaining.
Non-union?
Anyone not covered by a CBA.
Okay.
As long as the CBA, except for ones that the CBA does not cover, right? So if there's anything specific-
So anything the CBA is silent on, we would default? Because some of these are not, this is all not covered in all the CBAs, all of these things, maybe they are not-
Well, you should, so I got a couple of questions, like, I feel a little like we reinvent the wheel. There must be MSBA, what's the organization that-
MMA?
Yeah, maybe it's them. There must be standard templates for, like, everything, right?
Yep.
Yes, absolutely, so there are, there is a lot of standard language that I can use, which is helpful.
And any collective bargaining agreement, I mean, could, can we, because I don't recall that we do this, can we incorporate by reference, like, all these policies except, say, wherever the CBA is in conflict, the CBA rules, like, just bring them all in, like, into that contract?
Yes.
Do we do that?
If it's not specifically-
I've never read it, I've never read that. I'm used to that language all the time in contracts, right? Just incorporate all the FARS by reference, and then if there's any, and you always say the basic contract that you're signing has priority over the incorporate by reference if there's a conflict, but if there's no conflict, it's apparent that it's in, so I mean, I would suggest that. Because it is good, I mean, it's good to have a little bit, and, you know, usually we have all these things, like, well, everything's nuanced, and really people should be going to the standard first as the baseline.
Yeah.
Can I follow up on your last question about, you know, does it cover all the employees? So it does cover relative to, like-
The independent boards?
Independent boards, exactly.
So all municipal employees are covered by the personnel policies. The only difference between the types of employees, the so-called independent employees versus the Select Board-appointed versus the town administrator-appointed, is the enforcement of the policy. They're required to follow it, it's just whether or not it's enforced, and only the appointing authority can enforce it.
Right.
So no one's exempt from these policies, nor can a board make their own.
Based on what? Does that flow down from MGL?
Yes, you, your personnel bylaw gives the authority to change personnel policies exclusively to the Select Board.
Personnel bylaw, the town bylaws.
Yes, adopted by Town Meeting, so only Town Meeting could change that.
So does this, when we get through, when Aubrey gets through cleaning up, do we need to send it through Town Meeting to get it approved?
No.
No. Bylaw just says we have the authority, so if we say, "This is great," we pass it?
Yes.
Very good.
I just want to note one other financial implication, right, for holiday pay, sick leave, personal time, so that will, that can have an impact, right? How we identify, you know, who qualifies for specific holiday pay, how sick leave, who qualifies for sick leave, that can add up. And I do want to mention as well, with vacation accruals, by making it consistent on July 1, you know, that can help more financial forecasting on, you know, estimating vacation time and everything, instead of having it across the board of who's going to take what when, right?
So broadly on that first point, Aubrey, so if you're working 35 hours a week, you get full benefits. If you're working 25 or some number, you have a prorated amount, and below that, you get no benefits, or is there a threshold below which you don't accumulate these kind of PTO benefits?
And when you say benefits, right, is it, you know, that can include time off, that can include-
The paragraph we're on, yeah, the paragraph we're on. And maybe insurance too, I don't know. I mean, is there a cutoff, is a minimum number of hours you have to do?
Yeah, you do have to work at least 20 hours a week to qualify for benefits.
Okay. And then it's prorated up to 35 in terms of the amount that the town contributes or accrues?
And I think that's where it gets a little murky, because I think there's a few different definitions, at least a couple different definitions of full-time and part-time, and that's what we need to clarify.
You're clearing up, okay.
So do you think, that sounds like that might be one that warrants, I guess, more discussion, because it's pretty significant.
It's a pretty big wormhole.
Yeah.
So small towns, parallel is not exempt, but not as bad as some, have created some pretty interesting deals with employees to try and fill certain positions. So you may think of your longstanding part-time employee that the town said, "Well, maybe we should give this person holiday leave, since they've been working here for 30 years," and even though they don't quite qualify, we'll write a memo to get them. There is some of that legacy stuff here that we are phasing out by having this policy, because most people would do, say what you said, there's a full-time employee and there's a part-time employee. Also, to cover some special things in the library and other things, there have been policies and changes made because of the unique character of that particular, particular place. So it's impossible to fully standardize this in a way that you might expect, but we're working on getting it as close as possible. And then employees are all different, like, some employees will put in like 10 minutes of leave, you know, and like, that's not bad or good, it's just, it's complicated. So standardizing it and saying, "This is how many your increments can be," and other things helps resolve internal conflict and problems and complaints.
Just as a follow-up, I pulled up the bylaw, and so it does say, "Town administrator shall have the authority to draft and recommend policies. Policies will be effective upon approval by the Select Board." The other interesting note is, "All town departments and positions shall be subject to provisions of this bylaw and policies hereunder, except elected officers, elected town officials, and employees of the school department," so this does not apply to the schools.
Any of those schools, including the supervision of the schools?
Yep.
So they have their own personnel manual?
Yes.
Right. So do you guys have electronic timekeeping, or how do people record their hours?
Manual timers.
Sure, so we use Bamboo HR for a lot of the town employees now, and they clock in their hours daily, right? And then for those who can't fit in that, because police and everything is too complex with the pay for Bamboo, I think they just, they manually with a timesheet.
But the people in town all get on that system and log themselves?
Mm-hmm. And they can request their time off in it as well, so that now has alleviated Kelly from a lot of accrual tracking.
Scott and Travis have used it, so they can-
Hi, we can?
Yep, they approve my time.
Two hours here, two hours there.
Okay.
Oh, great, thank you.
Great.
I do want to-
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Talk about, quickly, so Aubrey's work on this has been comprehensive, so this just isn't, as stated before, her opinion, this is vetted amongst many towns and many best practices to include our Labor Council, so there's a lot of work here to try and standardize this. Also, when she says, "We have people acknowledge it," she's also socializing this information and helping employees to understand the policies when they do the acknowledgement form. So it's not just a, "Hey, click this button." There's an educational component to it that we're trying to expand with professional development. Because the worst-case situations are when someone violates a policy and they say they didn't know it was a policy, that that's not an excuse, unfortunately, so when we onboard, we do a lot of work with the policy, and we want to make sure that annually we're discussing it so that people know the rules, because most people, if they know the rules, don't break them. It's when they don't that-
Do they sign an acknowledgement?
Yeah, it's what it says.
Every year.
Yeah, every year.
Good, all right, great.
Yeah.
And the last thing you should know about the types of employees is, you have some unique employees, like the town's flag keeper and the volunteer fire, or call firefighters, who, it is difficult to fit into this, but we do follow best practices for them as well when we can. So you asked, "If we have electronic timekeeping, we can't for people like that." We could, but it would be-
Impractical.
-expensive and impractical.
And I'll say that will be where, you know, there's definitely some good templates for most of these, but every town is unique in certain positions, so that's where clarifying the positions and the part-time, full-time, you know, when you get the on-call firefighters versus a van driver, what does that mean, and, you know, trying to make sure that's consistent with everybody.
Got it, great.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is-
Thank you all.
Thanks for all the hard work, Aubrey, and more to come.
Yes, all right, thank you so much.
Good night.
All right, thank you.
The next batch of policies, this is a big batch, the next batch is things that you would consider, you're going to need in-depth conversation about parental leave and other big topics that we didn't put in the operation, because we know that it's a true policy decision, and it's big-time implications financially, et cetera.
And we won't, we won't see those until after we go through this step, right? We'll get through these and approve these, so this is probably in the beginning of the new year.
Yes, the longer you wait, though, the more exposure you have to problems. So as I stated, when Aubrey was on parental leave, she was the only municipal employee that was, there is a very small segment of Town Hall that is not covered by a CBA or not, not covered by other things, that most employees in Massachusetts are capable of. Municipal governments are just exempt. So the longer you wait with this, the more out of step you're getting with. So is a month a problem? No, but when we have an employee come up that has an issue, it's hard to explain to them.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And the parental leave has come up, you know, several times in the past, yeah.
We are behind the entire nation on parental leave.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're not the only town in Massachusetts, what we are behind.
I mean, does Aubrey have those, Aubrey, do you have those policies teed up to discuss in terms of, assuming you do this work, we schedule this, we review all these policies, we approve the policies, are we, next meeting, we're talking about the next step, or is there some-
Yeah, the staff recommendations would be a similar setup as today, right?
And you'd be ready to go with those, you'd be ready to go with those pretty quick following this step?
Right, and that will be a lot more conversation, to determine what you would want me to investigate further, put language together for.
Okay. So yeah, we'll see maybe that time between special town meeting and, it's just good to start blocking these things out. Okay, good. Thank you, Aubrey, it's 7:30, so let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the Road Maintenance Community Feedback Forum. This is the opportunity for the community to highlight, describe, explain any particular road maintenance issues they're facing that are not already part of the road maintenance plan, or are part of the road maintenance plan. Just in terms of context for anyone watching or listening or viewing this later, we're going to do this tonight and get the individual feedback, and then tentatively scheduled for the next meeting, we'll be reviewing and discussing a draft of the road maintenance plan for next year. So tonight will serve as an input to that discussion, tentatively scheduled for September ninth, correct? And you may, after we hear from individuals, you want to speak to some of the, some of the aspects of the road maintenance plan or the process?
Yes, and we have the twenty or so comments you got from online as well.
Right, great, okay, so let's get into it. In terms of, let's start with the room, Karen, hello, I see you there. Do you want to just come up and, yeah, and just maybe begin by just saying your name and your, your street address, just for the record?
Hi, everyone, I'm Karen Shanahan, and I live at Seven Audubon Lane.
And so, yeah, go dive right into it. Karen has been, has had an ongoing issue with drainage that's been discussed with Ryan in the past, and I was looped into back in June, so I'm familiar with what she's gonna describe, this is Ryan, but for the rest of the board?
Yeah, sure, so thanks for the time, everyone. I wanted to bring forward, as Scott said, an ongoing issue that is related to drainage on Concord Street, particularly near, where I live on Concord Street, there's my house, someone took a new picture recently, I guess. My house is at Seven Audubon, which is the corner of Concord and Audubon. So my backyard abuts Concord Street, and Audubon Lane is sort of on the, if you're looking at it, on the left-hand side, running down kind of the other corner of my house. Back in August of twenty-three, we had a bad storm. Not, you know, the worst storm I've ever seen in sixteen years of living here, but a bad storm. Lots of, lots of rain, and I looked out my window and I could see, it was a river of water coming down Audubon Lane, fast and furious, and then falling like a waterfall into my yard. After that storm, my backyard was entirely flooded, all of the soil in my backyard is in my pool. There was a lot of damage, I, I mean, I won't go through every detail of that tonight, we've got a lot to cover, it sounds like, from your agenda, so suffice to say, it's significant damage, very costly to fix, had to drain my pool, have my pool professionally cleaned. Equipment was broken, it, it hasn't, you know, things, things can happen, but things continued to happen, so every time it has rained after then, in the sort of two years since, I've had some amount of flooding. The water comes down Audubon directly from Concord, and Scott has a video that I've taken that, you're all welcome to watch, but it shows the flow of the water from the culvert on Concord near Buttrick, down Concord Street onto Audubon. There isn't a drain at the corner of Audubon and Concord Street, like there is in a lot of other spots. Not so much on Concord Street, but if you look on Cross Street, for instance, there are regularly paced drains. But the water just flows, there's, it's, clearly there is an inadequate draining problem at the top on Concord Street, where the water is
I don't think this is the video, I have the video.
Not catching, yeah, I don't, hopefully it'll play, if we can see.
This is a different one.
Is that a different one?
Yeah, this one, this isn't, I don't think that's the correct video, that's like.
It's me trying to not get into an accidental idea, yeah.
I have it on my computer, but I'm not connected to Zoom. The photos will show it, though, some of it.
Yeah, I mean, you can, the path that it takes, and I've got lots of videos, it, it goes, you know, directly down Concord and then turns the corner down Audubon, and it is really a free-flowing thing, it's not like a trickled water, it, it's, it's got some current to it. These are pictures, so the road above there, where you can see the kind of white bags, those are sandbags that I put in during the first storm to try to stem a little bit of the water, that's my side yard. There's a sinkhole right below that set of mailboxes up there that I've had to fill several times, because the water just literally pours right down into it. I used to have really nice grass, I don't anymore. I don't replace it, because every time it rains, it washes, it washes out. So there's been a lot of damage, I mean, I could, I could go on and on, I think you get the idea.
Karen, how long have you been, so you said in twenty-three that started?
Yeah.
How, have you, did you?
I've been there for sixteen years, I've never seen something like this happen. I have gone up several times to look at the culvert, I know Jim's been there to take a look at it. It, to me, it looks like it's very clouded, I looked at the culvert assessment reports, it's online. You know, I think it indicates that that particular one is, it's not the worst, but it's definitely occluded. I have to say that that culvert and the pipe in there, and we've had this discussion, it's, it's small. And I'm guessing it was built before there were this many homes there. And a lot of, you know, clearing of land, et cetera, however it has come to be, it's not adequate for what it needs to manage today. And even if it were entirely clear, that water is still gonna shoot right over, and it's either going on the part of my land that's not built on, which has now been, which abuts conservation land, to bring up another issue, and is, has been really destroyed, but it's, it clearly, it can't manage the load that, that is put into it. And this isn't just for sort of extremely large storms, it's every time we get, just a regular rainstorm. And so, you know, I don't know that it's just culvert maintenance, which is what I originally thought when this first happened. I, I think it really, well, I more than think, I, there needs to be a drain there, and that's, that's the only answer. I, I'm not an engineer, you don't need to be one.
No, Karen, it's, obviously it looks like you have a problem, and we, the town has a problem here too. But I'm just curious if you know, or maybe Jim, who's here, knows, where is the water supposed, when it was designed? Where was it supposed to go? Because obviously it's not going where it was intended, or maybe?
Up towards Buttrick Lane, there's sort of a drop inlet that was put in before I can even remember, and that shoots, it directs the water across the street to the side of Karen's yard, towards the back portion of it.
Because it looks like the wetlands there should all drain towards the wetlands, which were on the west side there, I guess, but. So if the water's going down Audubon, shouldn't there be something that directs it to stay on Audubon and then go into the wetlands, or, I don't?
Well, the other thing is, Audubon's a private way.
Okay.
So, so there's two issues, there's, there's, in my mind, there's, it sounds like more water is coming down Concord Street if this wasn't a problem in the past, and that's, that's the issue with the culvert. And, and then, Audubon being a private way, there's, and I've, I've been over there to look at this just at high level. There's no drainage on Audubon either, so there's nothing on Audubon to, to redirect the water away from your yard. It's basically coming down Audubon and draining into your yard as well. So there's, but that's, that's private.
See, the, the culvert on Buttrick, where you're, we're talking about, that, that is draining into the, the other side of my property, I guess, west, I've lost my orientation, but that flows freely, I mean, I can hear that at night, it's like an ocean. So that's coming through, but it's also going down Concord, so it's going in both directions. I can't say how it was designed to go. I just know that this, you know, this wasn't a problem for most of the time I lived there, it's become a problem. So I can only imagine either something has changed with the mechanism, or again, it wasn't designed to manage the load that it's having to manage now for whatever reason. So there isn't a drain on Audubon, you're right, Scott? I, I don't know for sure, that wouldn't be an issue if there were a drain on Concord. I mean, it's, it's, I think it's that simple.
Yeah, I, I think the question in my mind, living on a private street, and I, I manage the association, is, we have catch basins on, like, right off the street, and we're responsible for the drainage of our roads and the maintenance of our drains, so that, that was, that's always been in place, that went in place when the, when the development was built. In this case, there is no drainage on Audubon. So there, there may also be an issue with something changed on Audubon, but that would be whomever owns that property. I think our responsibility is up to the, the private land and dealing with
The Concord Street.
The Concord Street.
Yeah.
And it's, something's changed, right? And it's, is, it, we've seen this all over town, where suddenly we have, we have culvert issues we know about, but we've also seen water flow changes where, like, water's coming over Westford Street, and it, why, why is it backing up now, we don't know, sometimes it is downstream, construction is directing more water that way, so I guess, I know you guys have looked at this.
We have.
What, what's your assessment of what's going on there?
Most of the drainage is connected on the opposite side of Concord Street, on the Indian Hill side, and that draws it all down to Buttrick Pond, I believe, that's what that is down there.
Yeah.
And
Oh, to the
And the way the slope of Audubon Lane is, you know, when you stand at the top of Audubon Lane, unfortunately, you can see that the slope of the pavement all points to Karen's yard.
Ah. Oh, goodness.
And, you know, whatever excess runoff, if it's pouring, even though the water that's falling on Audubon Lane, unfortunately, is directed right at her property.
And so none of your other neighbors are experiencing?
No, because I catch it all.
Yeah.
I'm the first stop, so it doesn't really impact them. You know, it does come around, when it's particularly bad, it will come around the corner, but it, again, it will all land.
Right there.
Yeah, it's kind of just the way the physics of it works.
But any mitigation on Audubon needs to be done by the association or the owners of the land, right? I mean, we have a lot of private roads, and we don't do
We can't touch that.
Yeah, we can't touch the private.
But if I hear what's going on correctly, I mean, Indian Hill's pretty steep at that point, right? And it's, it's really coming down, it needs to be stopped before Audubon, it needs to be stopped on Concord Street.
Is there any place with that, with that, where you have the culvert, which is just up from Audubon, there's the, under, where the, where, as you said, the steady stream. Is there any way to just simply redirect water down that way?
That would be difficult due to the pitch of the topography, if you will. You would have to, you know, when you construct a basin, you have to have a spot, a spot where the water starts to flow into the pipe to direct it where you want to.
Right.
So for that to happen, you would have to construct a basin and basically put the pipe right at the top and pitch it down towards the, because most, the best way to probably do it would be to, you know, install a basin at the corner of Audubon Lane, and then you would have to run it, pitch it down Concord Road, roughly a hundred or a hundred fifty yards to the nearest existing basin, poke into that one, and then have the water catch up there, which is a big undertaking.
Yeah.
So, yeah, just, just a, just a time check, I know, I don't see anyone else in the room here, are there many people online that are also gonna have feedback? I just want to get a sense of.
I don't see any yet, but, okay.
And then we also have the comments to go over.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So legally, without an engineer, I would be hesitant to direct the water anywhere, because we would be, we would be causing another Seven Audubon Lane somewhere else. So there needs to be an engineering study first, before any work is done, I would guess. And then, the, the next question is, you know, the three hundred feet or so of road maintenance there is going to be a six-figure, six-figure project.
Do you need an engineering study, though? I mean, I guess I question that, because it doesn't seem like, I'm not trying to oversimplify, but I, I don't know that it's right that you're creating a, a problem in someone else's yard if the water drains and goes down, right? We're not, I'm not suggesting that you would sort of
You're just saying a bigger drain, and you can probably see right where it's supposed to be.
Yeah, I mean, if you look on Cross Street, for instance, there are drains, I, I mean, I've pasted, there, there are drains regularly. It's not the same on Concord Street, for whatever reason. You know, there's a drain, I think, somewhere near Indian Hill, right? And then the next one isn't, is not up until, like, Cross Street, they're not, there isn't one that's really close enough to where the flow of this water is to catch it, and so of course, gravity's gonna do its thing and take it down the nearest, nearest road.
I think the, the design that's the most obvious with the existing catch basins is, when you come down Indian Hill, facing Concord Road, there's one on your left side that catches all the runoff from all the yards and the water and the hill, and that directs the water across Indian Hill to another catch basin. And then that
On the same side of the road?
Same side of the road, and then that goes down and drains down that way, so.
On the other side of the road. It's all on the Buttrick Pond side of the road.
But where does it end up, Jim?
I believe it ends up near Buttrick Pond.
I mean, there's a conduit or something?
There's, the catch basins are all intertwined.
Well, that's where the six figures, it's not the engineering study costs the money, it's the
And you have to consider the additional water, and I don't know if conservation would be an issue with that. I have no idea as far as the pond itself and the wetlands and all that, adding water to it. But that's where the engineering study would probably come in.
An engineering study might sound bigger than what I mean it to, but the cons comm's gonna want to know, and all of the infrastructure in that place is gonna want to be assessed for if it can handle this water, so we don't break something else or discharge in a way that would cause a
But even if this came up, this came up on an issue in my neighborhood where there was a beaver dam backing up water, where the concern was public health, because if, if a yard is flooding and your septic's in that yard, that can create, regardless of the, the private interests, I know that was a concern for the Board of Health in terms of, you know, the problem wasn't that your yard was flooded, the problem that they were concerned about was if it floods and compromises the septic field, that becomes a bigger issue. So it, it seems like, I guess my question is how much of, we have a lot of private roads in Carlisle, how much of this is Concord versus Audubon, right? Like, if, if there was a, and I don't know, I don't know the history of Audubon, but I'm surprised there's no drains on Audubon in the original, I don't know the history of the design, but, or how it's graded, I mean, is, is that road improper and should be remedied as well?
I don't work on that, it's a private way, so we don't really go down there. Even a simple remedy as a curb would, would force the water away from your property, but who knows, you know, where it would impact further down on Audubon Lane.
And is there, is there an association, or is it?
There's not, I don't know if there ever was before, I, I'm not the original owner or builder.
Who maintains the road?
We do it as it's needed.
Okay.
You know, there, we've, we've not ever had, in the time that I've been there, a formal association.
Share plowing costs?
Yeah.
How many, how many houses are on the street?
Five houses, and most of this, there's not a lot of turnover, so it's never been an issue.
Do the other neighbors have the same issue, or you have?
No, I was just saying, because, because it, it comes all into my yard before it's ever an issue for them.
If you redirected it, I'm assuming it would just go down and
Get your neighbor?
Well, I mean, if I re, I think it needs to be redirected up top, right? I wouldn't suggest letting it come down and then redirect, like, sharing the wall, so to speak, to the rest of the neighbors. It needs to be redirected up top, and really, the only place to redirect it unless you want Concord Street flooded is for it to go down and under somewhere, right?
Or across, across Audubon, and I don't know what's past Audubon.
So Ryan, what, I mean, any idea what, first of all, would a house doctor do this engineering, or who would be the engineer that would?
Someone like Nitsch, yeah.
That's right, and what, what do you think, do you have any idea what that costs?
Because it didn't say, but Pheasant Hill was in the twenty to forty thousand dollar range.
For the engineering of work?
Pheasant Hill, yeah, we have a similar drainage problem.
Yeah.
Right, so it doesn't, it's not that expensive to get an answer.
No.
Yeah.
We probably should get an answer, but we have to figure out how to budget for that.
To get an answer? That's inexpensive.
And i- if, if there was a, a more economical solution on Audubon, say you could put a, a little thing that just catch the water and redirected it somehow, is, is there any, I mean, I see a house on the other side, though.
So when you go into Audubon, yeah, I mean, there's a house on Concord Street that's not part of Audubon, which is two, twenty-seven zero, I guess, from reading the numbers there. And then there's, you know, one right at the end of Audubon, and then one right across from me, and then the two others are further down.
Is everything sloped to the left?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
It all stops to the left.
Karen's lot is well below everyone else's.
So it doesn't slope, yours, if you go from your house to twenty-five B to A, you're going up?
Correct.
Yeah, it's
Well, yeah, twenty-five VA, I mean, twenty-five C, that's sort of on the highest, I think, pitch, but I'm definitely sort of on the, the lower end, yeah.
And when you go down Audubon, your house is on the left, is there anybody on the right hand side?
Not an, not an Audubon neighbor, but yes, there's someone on Concord Street whose road is right on the other side of Audubon.
I keep coming back to, this wasn't an issue, like, I'm, do you, is there just, from your observation, is there just more water coming down than there used to?
I've never seen this amount of water come down, I really haven't.
So I guess it's, something's not, something's
Something's changed up top.
Yeah, I know.
Right?
Something, so, so more, theoretically, more water is probably coming across Concord Road?
For sure. For sure, I can tell you.
Does that happen when it rains?
Ryan, can you go back to that picture that you were just showing?
Sure.
Jim, you've checked all the drains.
And then dating rainstorms, for sure.
So, Karen, which street is this, then?
This is Audubon, looking at, so, looking down Audubon from Concord Street.
From Concord.
From Concord.
Yeah.
But her house is on the left.
So you can see how the, the road slopes that way, too.
And the picture doesn't really do it justice, and you can, you can sort of tell from the water, right? Like, it's not just a small stream of water, it's a pretty significant flow, and this is not even kind of on the worst day, this is just one that I happened to catch. You can see sort of the depth there. That's right near the corner where Audubon turned, or the corner of my property.
Has there been discussion about regrading the road among your neighbors?
There hasn't been, because, again, this, this was never a problem, so I, I guess I don't wanna, I'd really ask that we not get stuck on it being a private way, I know it's part of this whole, it's part of the context, but.
We're not getting stuck on it, it's the main issue of.
I don't think it is, because this is, I'm not asking you to fix Audubon, I'm asking to try to address the source of the problem, which is not on Audubon. And if for sixteen years this was never a problem, I guess I find it difficult to say that, that the grading of Audubon or it was somehow constructed improperly, I mean, a whole, it was, it was signed off on by, you know, whoever sort of accepted the plans at Carlisle at some time, so I don't know that we can assume that, at the time it was built, it was improper, or that anything should have to be done to Audubon now. So, no, that discussion hasn't ever even occurred.
Jim, you've checked all the drains on Indian Hill.
We maintain the drains every year, uh, every year, uh, you hire a new England stormwater to come out and clear all the drains, take all the, uh, sand and roads, sand that's been washed in there.
But I mean, if it's coming down Indian Hill, is it coming down Indian Hill, is that?
It comes down Indian Hill off to the side, and so, yeah.
There was one picture of the culvert that was pretty interesting, and I don't know if that's since been cleared. Um, I think it was named Culvert.
We, we attend to that culvert regularly.
Yeah, but in that, uh, and maybe it's improved since then, but like, that was showing a, an issue with.
That's a culvert on Concord?
It was on, right, right up, right up the road from Audubon, this, right here.
Yeah.
That's on the other side of the road.
That's right across from, across and up a little.
Those two would post-mark the, the culvert.
Exactly, yeah.
And you can see that that's inundated.
So it is actually a culvert, is that hard to tell?
It's a drop inlet to a culvert, correct.
And the guy that, the house that we're looking at, do they also have a flooding problem?
Um, no, that's off to the backside of their property. All that water comes from the top of Indian Hill down.
So there's clearly, I mean, there's clearly a problem.
Yeah, there is.
So, it sounds like we should do.
But that water is coming down from Indian Hill, which is on the upper left there, all the way down to that culvert.
Right.
The driveway we're talking about, or the common, the private road, is up beyond there.
The culvert's just.
Culvert's down.
Just south of her property.
Closer.
It's like near nineteen oh.
Just charges at the, at the back of her fence on her property.
Oh, okay.
That could be, that could be the source of all the, if there's additional flow, for whatever reason.
Yeah, that's, we should, we gotta do some study.
Can we have someone take a look at that?
Well, you'd have to, we'd have to, how do you budget for that stuff? It'd have to be in the next cycle.
Gotta go on the road.
It would be chapter ninety, um, but everything you're gonna see tonight also.
Right, so we, not.
Right, so you're not gonna decide right now.
Wanna hear everything first and then decide, yeah.
Karen and I have a lot of conversation about this, so that, I want to help solve this problem, I don't want to defer it, but there is no, there is no solution here that we don't look at Audubon Lane, too, and we need to engage with someone. And Audubon Lane has to be, as an entity, involved in this, uh, for the surveying and for, for any of the analysis. And the, the fix might be on Audubon Lane, or an option. So, um, I think, if we did the study and everything moved forward, we, we would have more success and speed if we were able to engage with the Audubon Lane residents. To just say to, to keep it to Concord, I'm not sure you'd have the same result or speed.
So, um, the engineering study, though, that Nitsch might do, I understand the difference that, um, Audubon is a private way, but is there, you're, what you're saying is we need a similar study done of Audubon way?
Saying we can't touch it at all.
I know we can't, but I'm asking, you're suggesting that a, a separate study be done of Audubon in order to come up with a really complete solution to the problem.
Yes, it would be like asking the engineers to just ignore that whole piece.
Right.
So is it that you just need, like, access or permission? I guess, what, what level of engagement are you?
I, I don't know, that's why I wanted to engage.
I mean, I, I'll say this, it's not impacting any of my neighbors like it's impacting me. I, I think I can speak with some confidence that no one's gonna be upset if we need to do some work to fix this problem, even if that means it needs to be done on, on Audubon.
Right.
We just, we need to have some sort of fix to it that isn't my yard, that's all.
Right, I was just politely addressing the, not focusing on it being a private road, it has to be at least part of the equation.
Yeah.
Right, I just.
Ryan, I guess, what I, what I was saying, can we look into this, is, I was not, okay, you guys are skipping ahead of the fix, which is awesome, yeah, it needs to be fixed, totally get it, but can we just do like a root cause analysis? Something has changed and it's coming from Concord, it doesn't just originate and bubble up in her yard, it's coming from somewhere else, so where is it coming from and what has happened? So, some sort of little root cause analysis just to diagnose the problem.
Right, that's what I was trying, I agree with you, I was trying to say to Ryan, like, that's part of the engineering study, right? You baseline that.
Yeah.
Well, engineering studies, to me, mean it, it results in some sort of finding and recognition, right? There's like a, you know, is, I just wanna say.
Well, there's two parts to it, there's root cause and then there's how you fix it.
Right.
You really should do both, you shouldn't just stop at root cause.
But an, an engineering study, let's say we used our in-house person for the Concord part of it, they have the ability to address the root cause, to try to figure out what has happened to create all this water flow in the last couple of years?
I would hope so, I, I don't know, but I'll.
Maybe, when they, uh, when it's raining, you gotta.
But I know for sure they're gonna wanna know how much water's coming down just Audubon, too.
Right.
They're gonna wanna measure.
Yeah.
Well, so what would we need from them to be able to measure? I mean, I.
Permission.
Permission from.
I'm sure it's easily attained, yeah.
Yeah.
And do we have a contact person or persons, I don't know how that works.
So I know that I have permission from Karen, I do not know that the other four residents would, would necessarily just.
That's easy enough to.
But, yeah.
That's very easy.
Saying that, doing all that legwork would help speed all of this up.
Yeah, so are you willing to do that, Karen, to check in with the other four?
I mean, I don't know under, I, I don't know all the bylaws or anything, if you need to reach out to them formally, that's fine, I'm happy to socialize that with them and let them know that this is, you know, this is, they're well aware of the problem.
Okay, that's, that was gonna ask them.
They're all well aware of the problem.
It's not happening to them, but they know that it's happening to you.
As a comparison, um, with Pheasant Hill Lane, for example, um, we've done site visits out there and, uh, Nitsch came out and did some engineering, and all the waters, it's a similar situation, all the water flows down from the gentleman's driveway, and when it was paved the first time, there was no, um, attention given to the slope of the road. So, um, now, the, the remedy for that is gonna be, we're gonna have to add some drainage, and then, once all the drainage project's done, and we start to repave and mill and repave, we can pay attention to the slope of the road and try to angle it away from his driveway towards the drainage, so something similar to that might be a, a good resolution in this case, too, as well.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, we got kinda like an avalanche of culvert fixes presented to us all at once, and it sounds like, you know, this one potential culvert might be.
And it wasn't flagged, it was one of the ones that wasn't flagged.
I don't remember that being a big, you know, red.
No, it was like way down, I, I mean, I went through all of the, the report.
Cause they were.
Well, they might be looking, they're inspecting the culvert, not just the water.
Just, just the culvert, yeah, I mean, they're, you know, and as you said, it is, you know, if they got it on a good day, they would've said, um, it's fine, it's not clogged, it's.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, is it the culvert's the problem, but, okay.
And was Concord Street repaved around this time at all, or was something done to Concord Street?
There was some, um, utility work up there, um.
Cause always, something like that can always mess something up.
Yeah, they, they did repave it, um, the slope of the road looks very, uh, consistent with what it was before. So I don't think there's any drastic changes that forced any more water onto the right side of the road, uh, you know, in my opinion.
Just seems like you could just.
I know.
Get it to just.
Should keep going, it will be.
Yeah.
Okay.
We got enough for right now.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it.
Ryan, you, do you wanna initiate this process with Karen to get her neighbor to say it's all right, to have the engineers look at that? We haven't decided, right, we have to come back once we hear from everybody about their concerns and figure out whether or not we're gonna say we wanna address this, but does it make sense to go ahead and start that process to get, speed things along?
Yeah, I can speak to our design firms and get costs, I can work with Karen and company to, um, to talk about and bring it back, but I will need a green light from the board.
Well, we're not there yet, let's listen to the rest of it.
Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone else in the room have road maintenance topics they wanna discuss? Okay, seeing none, um, anyone online here to discuss road maintenance issues? Raise your hand or just chime in. Okay, do we wanna discuss the list that you had provided, Ryan, and via email? How do you wanna proceed at this point?
Yes, I can go over them.
Let's do that.
We can zoom in on any area, go to the GIS, that type of thing. Uh, I also visited each one of these, and Jim's been paving them for like thirty years, so he knows every one of these roads.
So every one of these, it's not new, it's, when you say not on plan, it means this isn't like a new issue that's been brought to your attention, it's, it's on your radar, but it just wasn't included in the plan as a priority.
Has not been put on a plan yet.
And these all came from individuals, though, that reached out to you.
The, the forum online.
We did a decent amount of outreach to try and get people to send in.
Yeah.
Comments through a, through an online forum, and we received a lot of comments today.
Ah, okay, thanks.
All right, so starting on Autumn, Autumn Lane, so I drove Autumn Lane, the potholes and patches discussed by this resident are, um, are a real concern, and this road's not in great shape, its PCI is fifty-four, which is one of the worst in town. It is a big road, though, so it would be, it would be expensive, and it is not currently on a plan.
I'm sorry, which one are you on?
Autumn, Autumn Lane.
Oh, Autumn, after Audubon, okay, got it, got it.
Why was it not on the plan if it's, if it's a crappy score?
It's one of the great examples of the local roads that, that get ignored because of traffic flow, so it doesn't have a tremendous, it has a lot of homes on it, but not a lot of traffic. I hadn't seen it yet, so I was glad to go see it.
Yeah.
Okay, Brook Street, the comment is, the asphalt has ruts in it, you could have it repave, you're often forced over when both lanes are used at the same time, it is, it is a very narrow road. They're asking for a sidewalk and, um, some lighting. So this road was paved relatively recently and had a score of eighty-five.
And is sidewalk something, that, that's really not part of our road, the sidewalk?
People brought in sidewalk comments, culvert comments, et cetera, so there's, there's a lot going on here.
Okay.
Carol Drive, which is a private road, um, when I drove it, I learned that, it's a private road, but there is a wetland on the opposite side of the road where the guardrail posts and steel cables have, have failed. So this is one of many areas where the, uh, cement and, and cable.
Those posts have failed on East Street.
They've, they've failed everywhere.
They're all.
They're all over the place, yeah.
That's what it says, yeah.
So I had a note to tell you, I looked at a lot of these, and that's just a general problem, probably of the magnitude of your culvert.
Right.
Could you enlarge this a little bit, Ryan, please?
In our action here, so we're just, we're just reviewing each of the streets, cause there's quite a few, I saw them when we came in, but we're just, we're just reviewing, we're not making a decision.
I mean, you can read all this stuff, we do, we can read ourselves, so let's, what is our overall objective here?
To hear it.
Well, we hear it, we don't need.
See it and read it.
Read it, it's public record, it's on there, so, I mean, the point is, there's a bunch of roads, they all have some complaint, some are more than others, some seem pretty simple, right? Like, they had, uh, you know, just, I forget, mark them or something, there was a few of them that were pretty simple fixes, and then a few more were.
This, yeah, the situation changes a little bit, right? On Tofit Road, I remember reading one that it's being torn up right now for, by Eversource, that, yeah, cause that was highlighted in red.
Yeah, that one seems, you can go back to Eversource and tell them to fix it.
It does, yeah, and so who, I mean, Ryan, are you in communication with them, or, I mean, I, I would hope the residents are also reaching out.
Uh, we have a community rep, and Jim works with, uh, Eversource pretty closely.
Okay, and my, I was talking to Jim today, my concern would be, you know, when we go through the trouble of fixing a road and it's all laying flat and looking nice, and then Eversource comes in and, you know, does their work and just kinda leaves it in crummy shape.
But they don't, I mean, is that normal, or is that just?
Oh, that's typical situation.
This is kind of an anomaly, what happened on, uh, Tofit Road was, um, Tofit, Carlton, and parts of East riding are all serviced by what they call legs of, um, electricity, they have two legs, and mostly serviced by one, and if that fails, then, uh, all that electricity is moved over to the other leg. Both of these legs were installed at the same time, um, one of them is failed, so, uh, they're, you know, if this one's failed and they were both installed at the same time, this one is, this is a good possibility that it could fail in the near future.
Yeah.
So they're trying to repair this one and avoid having twenty-eight generators throughout Tofit.
Right, but that's not the issue, they can do with that all they want, it's, what do they, how do they remediate when they're done, right?
They do a crummy job of patching it up.
Well, we should get on the.
A lot of it is off-road, but the, the, the road is in rough shape.
But did they make it worse, or was it?
Undoubtedly, yeah.
And is there any, so what's our recourse with them to require them to put it back, at least to the condition it was?
They would just fix the trenches that they had disturbed and, and hot-top it over.
And are they doing that?
Uh, they just really started the project at the beginning of last week, so, most of their digging has been off to the side. Uh, it's, it's a big undertaking, there's some ledger there, uh, Boddy is the company that's doing it, Joseph, I think it's.
I mean, do we have, does the town have to buy off on the final when they're done, like?
Um, I inspect it and, um, just make sure that there's no.
I mean, if you don't like what you see, if it looks, to Christine's point, if it's a mess, you can tell them you don't approve it and they have to do some.
Yes.
Have to fix it.
Right.
To that, um, there was another, there was a comment in there about sister poles and stuff, I know that's a little off topic, but, you know, the same thing, do we, does, I thought the town had a policy in place that they can't install poles like that.
Uh, Eversource is currently, um, doing a vegetation management system where, um, Mass Utilities has, um, Carlisle's on the edge of their grid for a certain area, Carlisle, Bedford, Concord, wherever that may be, and they assess these areas every year, and for three years in a row, Carlisle has failed the Mass Utilities testing. Uh, so they required Eversource to spend millions of dollars to upgrade poles, um, you know, trim back some trees, there's been a lot of issues with the planting boards and trees on scenic ways, you know, avoiding the wires and stuff, so it's roughly about twelve hundred trees, uh, six hundred or so are on, um, scenic roads, we've had hearings about that. A lot of them are on private way, uh, privately owned property, so they have to get permission from the homeowner to, you know, take the trees down, and they're going with that process, too. As I spoke with, um, Christine, they're kinda getting lasical-daisical about picking up some of the trees, they'll, they'll trim, cut them down and leave the stumps on the side of the road, and, uh, for example, on Fisk Street, I put a call into them, it's leaning down and they just gotta comb it, it has to be removed, you can't just.
But are they responsive when you contact them?
Um, for the most part, um, within a week or two.
So if we're really targeted, and we say this house is complaining, they'll go get it, but the overall problem, they're, they're just telling us it's gonna take weeks.
We have to stay on them, I guess.
Double poles, which is a statewide problem.
Right, what is that, the theory of that is you leave the old pole and put, you just buddy tie the old pole to the new pole?
Cause it's cheaper.
Yeah.
Yeah, then moving on.
It's supposed to be temporary, but somehow it becomes.
Well, anyway, we're not gonna, I don't wanna solve the global, you know, pole problem, so.
Yeah.
You have a plan, right? We had a plan, multi-year plan, blah, 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 and then we know that there are these, what do you call them, advocacy roads or something like that?
Parity roads.
Parity roads, and so we got that, and then if you shrink that again, so we, to where we can see the PCI scores, and they, I mean, they're on, some of them are on plans, and some are not on a plan, and they have a, some of them have a pretty good score, so, like, and then I noticed in your other document that, you know, we're pretty well booked into the eight hundred thousand dollars a year range for about two or three years, and then it's half of that, so we, so can't we just feather these in for later? Like, just make it part of the plan?
We can.
In the last two years, we've done, uh, eighteen partial roadways or full roadways repaved in the last two years, in the last two years. So that's a good sized chunk as opposed to-
I mean, this is-
I had it before.
The previous year.
I know this is not an exhaustive list, but it's not that long of a list considering all the roads we have.
Ryan, remind us of your methodology here. You just like put out a pulse on, what, social media or something? And how long did people have to respond? Did you put this out two weeks ago today?
A month.
A month, okay.
It was taken up by the mosquito as well.
Yep.
Okay. And so people responded if they felt strongly enough about the condition of their road? Hmm, I see.
Well, I think we also kind of have to keep in mind that the PCI study was done two years ago, I believe. So in two years' time, PCIs change. You know, there's frozen cracks and potholes open up. So PCIs can change.
Well, you don't need a PCI study, Jim, to go look at a road and decide.
Right, no, I understand. But it helps direct us to, you know, hey, in my own head, I've been here thirty years. I can go North Road, Indian Hill, Rutland, Rockland, you know, and I know. But this helps us and it helps ease some of the residents' concerns saying, you know, you're on the radar.
Right.
Right.
We're not going to just pave over here.
But that's what I'd say rather than-
None of these are on the radar.
Well, some of them are.
They are.
Oh, I thought... I'm sorry. I was looking at the ones at the top of it. Sorry.
These are twenty-twenty-seven.
I was looking at the comments one, right? Where the first bunch are not on the plan.
Well, but some of these, like I live off of Curve Street. Like the pathway outside the guardrail installed last fall is not wide enough. I've been down that pathway. I didn't notice it wasn't wide enough. And that's a trail. Like I don't think that... That doesn't really... That's not a road maintenance issue. The other telephone poles we talked about. There's something about painted lines. I don't know what...
Painting lines.
I don't know what... How those fit into this, if at all. It says NA on there.
So I would suggest all of those safety items you give to your safety committee to give you recommendations on.
Because those are safety. That's not road maintenance.
Like the... There's a... Several people advocate for turning out of town hall and how dangerous it is.
Yeah.
But this is our senior.
Trim it, right. Trim the bushes.
Not trimming. It's the actual intersection being-
Yeah.
The yellow lines and the white lines on the main roads are road maintenance. That's covered under... It's kind of covered under a line budget, but it's considerable.
Yeah, one of the roads, they want a yellow line, right? So people know that it's a two-way.
Well, they want us to be able to see at night, you know?
But some of these roads, like Curve isn't wide enough. Like, yeah, it's dangerous and you always worry about running into another car, but it's not wide enough to put a center lane on.
Well, we repaved Rutland two years ago.
Yeah.
It's Rutland, where it goes to the workouts, sorry.
Yes.
And that's very dark and very windy. So I took it upon myself where to ask marketing to put a W yellow line down Rutland. And a lot of feedback through the safety committee and residents said, now it's a racetrack. They think it's a racetrack. They want me to let that one fade away.
I don't know. I don't believe... I drive that road every day. It is not a racetrack. Okay, we have the stop sign.
It's so docked, it delineates the travel lanes so you can see, you know, where you're supposed to be. But consensus said to let them fade away.
But anyway.
Well, so why don't we just to try to move along, why don't we take all the items up here that are safety committee related and take those off and send those to the safety committee? And then the ones that... Where it says that are left that are true road maintenance concerns that are listed as not being on the plan, it seems to me that's the piece that we need to think about whether we want to work them into the plan. And the question is, you know, what years do we work them into the plan? Am I summarizing that?
I just want to... I'm just giving you data.
Yeah.
Because you like data for when this decision comes up and it's just a four hundred thousand dollar line on the capital plan.
Yeah.
So if you look at the PCIs for twenty-twenty-six, they're all at or worse than the complaints. So there are some bad scores in there, but there's also some bad scores currently on the plan.
Yeah.
And then something like Toffett Road, which did have some comments and I drove it and I agree with all the comments, is on twenty-twenty-seven, but that's two years from now.
Right.
So we're looking for direction on not just putting them on the plan, but making sure that we're not the one prioritizing it.
Right, right.
But you use the methodology. I'm reluctant to-
I don't know. I mean, unless we all go out and start driving these roads. My question would be, is there anything on here that's not on a plan that you think should be on a plan? Or does any information here change what you would recommend for next year? Other than that, I don't know. I don't have any basis to say, oh, no, well, this should be on the plan. Like, I defer to the work you've been doing on this.
Exactly, exactly right.
How is PCI calculated?
There's a whole... You have to... You should read this thing.
Read the report. There's a-
There's a whole report. It might have been before I was-
It's well before your time.
Very similar to the culvert.
It's a good report. You should read it. It's very numeric. It's very-
Every road in Carlisle.
Yeah.
And there's more roads that need work than we can support. So it's just-
So it's a multi-year plan.
I hear you. I guess the question is-
Last I heard, it was a million dollar backlog in payment.
Awesome.
And we were only spending like four hundred and now it's ninety.
Yeah.
We're bringing up our score over time. But, you know, we made a decision as a select board to focus on the four main roads first and then move out from there. And there are unfortunately some tertiary roads that will not get paved for a while. So what we've done is had kind of a, I guess, a subjective kind of judgment as to how those get done. And so that's why we have these meetings from time to time to understand if there are things we missed and we should add them in or not.
Right.
And so you've said, let's just-
Well, I think we need to look at what's left, you know, once we-
But anything we put on, something's going to have to come off of the plan.
Well, I'm not... Right, but we need a rationale.
No, but you're... I think the disconnect, Barney, you're advocating, I think, a more interventionist approach by the select board. I think what I'm hearing from Scott and myself, anyway-
No, no, I agree with you.
Is like, let the pros figure it out.
Well, but we have the scores that were done two years ago on all these roads.
Right.
Right? And I don't... I don't... I can't do the cross-referencing just from looking at my laptop. Do we know that all of the ones that are not on the plan, that their numbers are lower than all of the ones that are on the plan?
Jim could go informally and survey and decide that. But again-
Well, no, I'm just saying there... We... David, I understand your point and I agree with you. I'm not going to try to make the decision about whether or not a road should go on our maintenance plan. But I do think with the data that we do have and with the judgment that we're asking from the DPW and if we want an engineer to get involved. But we need to look at that and then decide. And we do then make the decision about, okay, is there a rationale for either adding some of these in and that's going to mean higher cost, or we're spreading it instead of over, well, now it's the next three years, right? Because it was a five-year plan?
No, but in a new... Oh, yeah.
Right? So then we extend our plan for two more years and we have a five-year plan and allows us to put some of these in there. I... You're right. So I'm just saying, we want to be able to have a public document that tells people when roads are going to be done and that also is based on sound analysis.
We do have data on almost every road in town.
Yeah.
So you look at every year, to Barney's point, you look at your plan and you make adjustments for the coming year. You don't just-
Based on community feedback as well, so.
But also your own driving around, as you said, right?
And your feedback. So one of the things we brought to you was Berry Corner Lane.
Right.
And when we talked about, should we extend ourselves for this procurement? I mean, we had options. One of the questions you had was, well, what are we bumping? So we're trying to show you what we're bumping. And I found Karen in Audubon Lane's argument to be very compelling, but that is a piece of this puzzle. And this eight hundred thousand doesn't include any of the culverts.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. The problem with Karen's problem is it's going to be a very expensive fix. That's... It's going to cost half the budget of the paving if we're the culvert.
Which is why we're not throwing all these roads into the plan because we know that these things pop up. So we just want to make sure we're communicating that so it doesn't become Jim and Ryan's plan.
Right.
So back to the-
Mostly Jim's.
Back to the next... Back to the next meeting, though, because at the next meeting, we're supposed to review the plan and approve the plan, correct? So I guess my question with between now and whenever we got these and when you recommend the plan, my request is that you look through these. If you haven't looked at a road, look at the road and see if you would make any adjustments. You would recommend either adding these to a plan or accelerating something on a plan based on current conditions and community feedback? And if the answer is, yeah, these are all issues, but our plan is still the priority from our estimation, that's something I would support that. I just want to make sure that... And I think to Barney's point is that we're not just taking the report and going with the number, that we're... It is a dynamic situation.
So if you look at this five-year plan that Ryan gave to you all, down there is a priority list that I put together.
Yep.
For, based on residential complaints, plowing, when you're plowing roads like this, it's beating the heck out of equipment. And to make the equipment last, it's more beneficial to be plowing on this road. So-
Yeah.
And safety, you know, public safety issues when you do, when you are plowing, you're not leaving ruts and ice and using more material. And, you know, it's a steamroll effect where, you know, if you don't pay attention to it now, it's going to cost you longer.
Yeah.
That's why some of them have changed by my priority, you know, what I think should be addressed, but still keeping in mind the residents' concerns and concerns of you all to get a good plan together, you know?
So you are taking this input as you... As we approach the recommendation, you're looking at these?
Absolutely.
And if you feel the need to make an adjustment, that would be part of your recommendation next time we see you? Fair enough? Yeah. I mean, I think we just want to make sure that you guys are the experts and that you're taking the community feedback and your own, you know, your workers' feedback, everybody's. And that we're making the proper adjustments as we go.
But I mean, for ground rules, is eight hundred... Are we... We're comfortable with eight hundred spent, right? Do we want more or do we want to keep it at that? Maybe index it to inflation or something? Because we're, you know, hovering around up and down about...
And that's also without anything for the culvert.
It's nothing to... Yeah, culvert is a whole different thing. We spent seven fifty-one and twenty-five. We're going to spend eight twenty this year, eight thirty-one the next year and eight oh-one. So we're... I mean, they got to have some guidance, right? I don't like, like, getting in the middle of a process like we should be the arbiters of the road. But absolutely, we should say like, the number, right? So is that a good number? Are we happy with that number? Or is... Do you think there's good arguments to be made, say to put another fifty or a hundred thousand in?
We can spend whatever you can afford. You can afford it.
But it's also based on changes in the cost of material.
Leave it there. Let's leave it there. Okay.
But that means that some of these roads are not going to be addressed. We need to communicate that.
We need to communicate.
That's why he's doing this, is because Ryan and Jim are not going to solely make that decision. It's our incumbent on us as the select board.
They have two years. I mean, again, reading that, there's two years beyond the three years or whatever. I don't know. I get confused. But it drops down to the four hundred something level because you haven't filled in the blanks yet, right?
Yeah.
So fill in the blanks.
The good news is the state funding level has matched what we're doing. So that four hundred was anticipating the state going down.
I think maybe something... How many private roads have you had?
Oh, man.
I couldn't.
Well, I think something that would be more meaty from a policy standpoint for us is have some more clarity. I mean, I live on Carroll, so I'm well familiar with a private road. And it seems, you know, is it East Street fault? Is it Carroll's fault? Is it Audubon? Is it Indian Hill? Like, we should probably start thinking about more, like the HR policy. We should have some more clarity around what are the responsibilities? I don't care if they were there when the road was built or not. They own a house on a private road. And I know, you know, again, personally, we got to do our plowing. We understand that. We hire a plow company. We pay for it. When we had to repave it, we all got together. It took my wife and many bottles of wine to get all six. I'm serious. But we came to an agreement and we did it. Like, we... But there's... And then very few of them, I think, have formal associations. It's just the neighbors get together. Maybe we got to think about giving some guidance to that.
You'll never be able to make this stick, but you should never accept another public road without-
Another private road.
Private road.
Private road without... Well, make it public without some entity in charge of that area.
Yeah.
Right. But the legacy private roads we have, I'm just saying we should-
It's too late, yeah.
Well, it's too late, but we could still codify what we believe is the edge of the town's responsibility and then what the private... How they manage, self-manage, we don't need to get into.
Right.
But if it's very clear-
Their responsibility.
Like, where's the plow end? And then, you know, like-
At the line. It's the property line.
Yeah. I don't think we need to codify. It's... Isn't that?
I don't know. I mean, we just heard tonight. She's saying, well, the water's coming from the public road. Why are you picking on me?
Well, we're talking paving here, yes.
No, I'm talking about it all. I'm just saying, there's a lot of issues. I'm just suggesting that.
Yeah. It's complicated.
Right. Okay.
Good.
But we have a plan for two weeks, right? We're going to-
We have a plan.
Okay.
And we'll carve out the safety stuff. We'll carve out the stuff that's not... And get that to the safety committee.
And I meant to bring up some of these things, like the culvert on Curve Street.
Yeah.
DPW already handled it, driven by there.
That's the one right now. It's-
That's going to be paved tomorrow.
Great, yeah.
So we are doing ongoing maintenance as we can. We've done a great job proactively addressing this. So, you know, ten percent of this plan's already been addressed.
Yeah, that's great.
Now we have a mower, a sweet new mower.
We don't have it yet. We have a demo, but it looks like that's-
You said I complained when I spoke too soon.
I'm not having it. We just got a demo of it right now. So had the guys go out because they're the ones that are going to be operating it. They know what they have to spend. They know what type of equipment we need. I think that you all are going to be very happy with it.
You gave it a thumbs up?
Yeah, I did. I talked into it. It's pretty nice.
Yeah. Good.
Okay. More to come at the next meeting. So it is eight twenty-seven. I think we're close enough to eight thirty to turn the page to the Tekton Fire Station presentation. So Matt, if you want to come up, if any other...
Thank you all.
Anyone else from the fire department wants to come up and chime in? And Matt, I assume you want to share your screen, correct?
That'd be great.
Okay. So if you could make Matt a co-host.
Anybody on there that's from Tekton? One plus?
Uh, One plus is fire. No.
That's Eric's phone.
That's Eric.
Oh, oh, right.
And that's the only one from Tekton.
Scott. And Mark Gibson is one plus.
Firefighter.
Oh, firefighter. Okay, great. Good, thank you.
Parklandian is a gimped.
Okay. Oh, good. Thank you. Good.
So last we left off, we were going to refine the options. You were going to coordinate with the fire department and look at elevator options. And so tonight, you're presenting a refined option?
That's right.
Great.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Matt.
And we're all seeing this for the first time, by the way, so.
You have not? That's right. Work out to the last minute as always.
Okay.
So just a quick project update, where we've been in the past two weeks. So August twelfth, we presented a few options and then we also did a deep dive into the space needs assessment, sort of went through every component of the fire station program, talked about the pros and the benefits of the fire department and their organization. The following day, we met with fire leadership and we reviewed the space needs that we reviewed with you folks, went into a deep dive on that, talked about ways we could be... We could combine things, what made sense, what was missing from the program that was really critical that we sort of took the liberty of slashing ahead of the last meeting in an effort to cost cut. So we corrected some of those items. The rest of that week, we worked diligently developing the two-story concept that we had discussed on August twelfth. August eighth, August nineteenth, we reviewed that draft concept with the chief and his leadership. We also... My team, Antonia, who's our community engagement specialist, she had a call with Scott and myself and we talked about a potential of community engagement strategy that we've begun blocking out. We can talk conceptually about that if time allows this evening. From August nineteenth through today, we continue refining that strategy. We met again with We, we met again with the chief on the twenty-first, gave him a couple of days to digest the plan that we had reviewed with him on the two-story scheme. He provided us a series of comments in which I told him, there's no way between then and now we'd be able to get them incorporated, although we did. So I think I captured everything that you had concerns about. If anything got left off, missed, or misinterpreted, you know, we'll continue to refine beyond today. And, and, and so that's where we are today with the updated plan. So I'll jump out of PowerPoint and I'll run over into PDF. So this is the updated site plan based on the, the two-story solution. If you recall, some of the previous schemes, in order to fit everything as a single story, it, it required us to sort of cut the building up into a number of different additions. So what you see here, this square, that's the existing fire station itself. Previously, we had additions here, down along the front, wrapping around the corner, all over the place. This basically looks at a, a, a single block, one single rectangular addition here. We looked at previously a number, several different schemes for the outbuilding, a lot of them were sort of tucking it back up off of the hillside. In talking with the fire department, we thought that, that it could be a potential option to, there's sort of a small rubble retaining wall here, and then the site steps down. So we could do a small fill area or small foundation retaining wall and bring the outbuilding into the site so that it's more accessible to the firefighters. Especially if it's going to be storing a lot more of their critical operations, like their trailers and pumps and things like that that they, that they need, rather than go down into the, the back of the hillside, you know, during inclement weather, when they need one of these things, it's, it's right there and ready to be accessed from their parking lot. We then tried to sort of plug in parking spaces wherever we could, understanding that we've, we've got some wetlands setback boundaries and things like that we have to, to manage. So with the second story addition, moving all the primary public and staff access points to the rear of the site, we're no longer going to be utilizing the existing entry. So if we cut off access to that entry, use that second story space as mezzanine and storage and mechanical space, we can certainly carve a bit into the hillside against the existing adjacent retaining wall here, get a couple of parking spaces. We're a little tight here with the existing generator, so, you know, maybe this parking space could, could, we might have to lose it or relocate the generator, and certainly the cost estimate can help us think about whether that, that makes sense, but maybe a few parking spaces here. We've got a little bit of room here for one next to the outbuilding, or can make the outbuilding a little bit bigger as we, as we lay that space out. And then we're hoping we can squeeze a bank of angled parking spaces just to the back along the radio tower. This is sort of within the area of previous disturbance, this one in particular where it starts to, to get into the mall head protection zone and things like that. So we think it's practical and feasible, it's tight, but certainly affords a lot more usable site space than the previous.
So Matt, the double, the gray band, that's the double dashed blue lines, that's the hundred yard flood or wetlands, that's like the secondary wetlands?
This is the twenty-five, and this is the fifty.
And you're allowed to encroach on the fifty? You can encroach on the twenty-five.
Correct.
And then the dashed red line along Westford Road?
That's your property line.
No, the setback one, no.
Yes, that's, so, current, currently, the way that the building is zoned, the setback line is back at fifty feet off of the road.
Yeah.
I think it's like residential or something like that that is zoned, I can't remember correctly. I did talk to the building commissioner several months ago, and we talked about potentially rezoning this as, as a business use, which would be allowable, and that would reduce it to a twenty-five foot setback.
Right. And you can't chop up that little piece of green to put the gen, the generator in the lower left corner?
Here?
Up to the upper, yeah, right next to the parking lot. You said you might lose a space, but.
Yeah, so there's an existing small generator right now, it wouldn't be sized adequately to do the new addition. We would supplement that with an additional generator or replace it in kind, whatever was the most cost effective. We'll have to figure out where that, where that sits, certainly. Whether or not that takes over where these parking spaces are or not, but we're trying to play with all the options and see where everything could feasibly fit.
Are you doing air conditioning in the roof or on the ground?
It'll probably be on, on a portion of the roof. Yeah. So I will jump into the ground floor plan.
And just as we get into this, chief, deputy chief, you guys, to this point, you're supportive of what we're seeing here today?
Right. So the site plan is newer for us.
Right.
We have been, have been told we could put parking in some places he doesn't know about, so we might work on that.
Okay. But in terms of some of the, like, the flow, the floor plan, this, this, you feel like this incorporates your feedback?
Right.
Okay.
In, in fact, we did, we initially, when we, when we walked this through with chief last week, we actually had the addition about fifteen feet further planned west to the left.
Yep.
To get them a better, better swing out of the bays, because this is essentially where the apparatus bay addition is. He actually requested that we shift that over, so we did push it pretty close to the extent that we could, and I think it actually, I think it was a good move. It made a lot of things work better.
Okay.
And I just closed the plan I wanted to go to. Okay, so on the ground floor, so again, existing apparatus bays in their back of house space and then, and then new. I'll walk you from the lobby through the new addition, and then we'll go back down through the existing.
And before you do, the existing space, the back of house space, that's, in this plan, is the same, or generally not?
We are changing the rooms within here for the most part. So everything you see in dark gray would be new, and then everything, all the walls that are the light gray poche, those are existing.
But we're preserving the bulk of the existing space?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, effectively, the apparatus bays themselves, we're not touching them. We're only goes as is.
You're losing the second ambulance bay.
Right, that.
Which we always do.
Right.
It's kind of useless.
So as you, as you come in, there's a small vestibule and a small lobby here. We have one single unisex restroom off of the lobby that can be utilized by the public. The chief's admin is directly off of the lobby with a small transaction window, so there could be sort of a control point as you come in. Right now, when you come into the fire station, it's kind of, here it all is. There's no real controlled access once you're in the door for the most part. Directly behind the admin is the chief's office. There's a stair to get up to the, to the second floor. Right across from the chief is also the elevator, which is backed up by the elevator machine room. Also right across from the chief and the admin is their record storage space. We have the deputy chief's office. Behind that, we have a shared copy work area, so this is sort of a central photocopy space for, for all of that administration. And then we have a shared EMS fire prevention office. We would look to, since we eliminated a while back the conference room as part of the administrative space, and the, the idea was, well, if the training room was in the same space as that, they could use the training room as a conference room, but it's on the second floor. So we could utilize more flexible furniture within that office space so that they could use it in their office, or if there was a need for a conference, they could move the furniture and use it as a conference space as well. So trying to make that more of a flexible office space that can be used by the department.
You're talking about the second floor?
No, 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 right here, this office in particular. So this could double as an office and a conference room.
Got you, okay.
Custodial room, we've got a restroom in, on the administrative side, and then a transition zone that brings you, that acts as an airlock into the new apparatus bays, which are four, four bays, two double D, these are back-in only. Above that, we've got a small mechanical electrical room to supplement or to, to help with the new service that'll be provided for this part of the building. And then our second egress stair that can double as a training stair. So rather than this just be like a regular stair that you see in any office building, we extend a little bit larger landing on one, on one side that allows us to put windows and things like that in it, so the, the fire department can bring the ladder truck in, put ladders up against the building, and practice a number of different training scenarios for, for high rescues and things like that, bailing out of windows. A lot of the training things that a lot of modern fire departments have that your department doesn't have access to in-house. So this is one of those low, like, almost zero-cost advantages to a two-story scheme, is we can provide a lot of these training scenarios within the building itself, so they can run these training scenarios whenever they need to.
So is, how much of this space is public?
So just the, just the lobby and everything else, you'd sort of have to get buzzed back to.
I see, okay.
Heading down to the bays, so we've got our turnout gear storeroom, so this is where all their, their bunker gear is stored. We've provided an access point into that room from the administrative side, so firefighters up on the second floor come right down the stair and they're in. Anybody working in, in the administrative offices can come right in. We also have an exterior door, so any qualified firefighters that are coming to the, the station property, they need to get into their gear and then do a truck, they have easy access right into the building, and then they're able to get into either the existing bays or the new bays directly. We're also creating a small opening in the existing apparatus bays so that there is open direct access between both as well. Heading down to the bottom of the plan, so existing electric room, existing boiler room, turning that into a supplemental electric room. With the town's sustainability requirements with Mass Energy Code, you know, all electric is the, starting the conversation on how to achieve a lot of those goals, so providing more electrical infrastructure is kind of important to hitting those, those milestones. We've got a workroom, so this is for, for working on firematic gear, working on trucks, things like that, this is where tools are stored. Compressor room, directly next to that is their SC, the SCBA room. So this is about the footprint of the, the compressor that they use to fill their air tanks, there's some storage for spare bottles, and then a four-bay wash sink, which is an NFPA requirement for decontaminating the face masks that they wear out of the sink. We've got a, a restroom here that we're building into what was the old locker room, so we're utilizing some of the existing plumbing to, to effectively add that hot zone restroom. We've got a storage room for firematic gear, so this is hoses and fittings and things like that. We've got a decontamination space, so this is your gear extractor, there's a gross decon shower, a, a double sink, and then a gear dryer. And then we carved in a little report writing area off of the base here as well, one of the conversations we had last time we, we met. This is within the existing bay, we're infilling the existing overhead door, so we can, we could pretty cost-effectively add windows into it and things like that. I know we're not showing it in the plan here, but if that becomes a report writing space, a couple of windows would be nice. And that's it for the first floor. Any questions before we move upstairs?
Just one about the decontaminations, can you just walk me through, let's say you've come in, you've put on your gear, you've gotten on a engine, and you've gone to a fire, and you come back, then what happens? How do you, how do you walk through that process?
So you get off the truck, you, you go into the, into the decon space. If your gear is heavily contaminated, you know, most, a lot of fire departments will, will do that sort of gross decon on scene and not bring that back to the firehouse, but if there, but, but there are sometimes cases where you do need to do a gross decon here. So this, this square area is, is basically a five-foot by five-foot shower with, with high-pressure nozzles. You can go in there fully clothed in your gear.
Okay.
Hose off.
Yep.
We have rescue dogs on the subject, thanks.
There you go. Then the gear goes into this gear extractor, so this is a, it, it spins it like eight or nine times, eight or nine Gs, to, to really just flush everything out of, of their gear. And then it goes on this rack, which, which, we plan for the largest, that they, that they make, they make two main types of gear dryers, they make an electric cabinet-style one, which just, which is basically like a big oven, you put the gear in, and it dries it, and then vents it out. This is a ram air version, so it's basically, I don't know if you've ever seen like boot warmers, where you put your, your boot upside down on the pipe and it blows it out? That's effectively what that does. So we plan for the worst-case scenario, I think we talked about doing a cabinet dryer, but we want to make sure that we've accommodated the space in case that changes twenty years from now.
And so where does, sorry, is that the end of that part?
Then the next, the next step beyond that process is NFPA recommends that all fire personnel that have been on scene shower within an hour of returning to the firehouse.
Okay.
That would then happen upstairs in the buildings.
I see.
So there's, there's a couple of shower facilities up there.
So they go in and out of the same door?
Yeah.
Leaving all their stuff behind?
Leaving their stuff behind.
And then they go up and shower?
Correct.
Okay.
It was my impression after coming out of the Westford tour that, you know, it was very common, I don't know if it was best practice, or, but there was like these, you know, green, yellow, red stations, right? It doesn't look like there's room for that here. We're all kind of in one room, everyone's kind of doing the shower, the, you know, I'll call it washer dryer.
No, but that's upstairs, right? That's a different thing. This is just the.
Just for just the.
This is all red.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's not a, a continuous flow, it's, got it, because it's, it does, space is not allowed to have a continuous flow, is what I'm asking.
Right, so if you, if you were to look at the plan, basically, this is all your red zone?
Yes.
Here?
And upstairs.
This, and this is your yellow zone?
Right.
The rest of it's green.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Two other spaces I didn't note, we do have an EMS supply storage and EMS drug storage in the back of the, the new bays as well.
Okay.
So the, Matt, so the, the second, the, the four-vehicle bay up top?
Yeah.
The turning radius for that, we saw in the other sketch, you know, you're gonna, you can encroach that gray that's inside the dotted?
Yeah.
Blues, you can use that, and there's enough turning radius.
So, so fifty feet is the minimum magic number that you can take a large ladder truck and, and make a swing and back it in? We've got a little bit more than fifty feet here currently.
So you can just about make it?
Yeah.
What happens when it, what happened when you had it fifteen feet to the last?
Well, it gets tight, but we weren't, we weren't putting the, the ladder truck in there.
Okay, gotcha.
I, I would say this is, this is sort of a draft layout of where the pieces go.
Right.
We would certainly work a little bit more with the fire department to really accurately put where, where each piece is, is going to go. But we have flexibility in how they arrange it based on the layout. So on the second floor, so I noted the upstairs mezzanine piece, so we're not touching the existing office space, we're just kind of leave that as is. We can use it for supplemental space for mechanical electrical, should we need it, we could also use it, the fire department could also use it as additional storage. Because we are filling in this space down below with room, we can just put a lightweight metal deck on top of those rooms and put a removable railing into the apparatus bay, and they can use this as additional mezzanine storage. They can, they can use a little lift and, and put additional materials up there. So primarily, the second floor, we've got two stairs either end, we've got our elevator in the middle. So you come up that stair, if you recall, that was the one behind the chief's office. You come up to a small upper lobby area, and that way that if there is department trainings that invite the public in or public trainings and things like that, utilizing the training room, we're able to put a little, a secure door in here and create a secure access point, so the public won't, won't be afforded access to their sleeping and living quarters, but would be able to be, to access the training room. That training room consists of thirty seats at tables and chairs, we've got a small training storage space, and then we have a folding partition, acoustic partition that runs the back of the training room, that can open that up to the dining, day room, and kitchen space at the fire department on, on their living quarter side for a larger training. So if the chief had their entire membership come in for a training, they sort of open that folding partition up, and they'd be able to accommodate their entire membership roster.
Trainees are facing to the right.
To the right, correct. So we've got our day room area, so this is effectively the fire department's living room. We've got a kitchen area here to, to support that, and then our dining area would sort of be a combination space with that expansion into the training room. So we would look at, again, using a flexible furniture system that could be broken down and turned into training tables or ganged back together and become a dining table. So it allows us to sort of take what would be two, you know, sixteen hundred square feet of space and compress it down to half of that. We do have, we were able to get a small pantry in the kitchen as well. Then along the north wall, we've got our five bunk rooms, so the officer bunk, and then the four individual firefighter bunk rooms. These have room for, for a bed and a side table, as well as a small desk, so they can also serve as hoteling office space for anybody that is, is a volunteer that lives out of town that wants to spend more time at the fire station. We then have a, a series of wardrobes in the corridor, so these are basically two-tier lockers that'll hold personal clothing and things like that for when they are, so, so that when they do come back from a call, they've got a pair of clothes to change into, or if they're staying overnight for, for an event or a storm or whatever, they've got to change their clothes and toiletries and things like that. Right here at the fire department, they don't need to bring it with them every time. We've got three restroom showers, you know, I, I think, I think, you know, it's, it's a lot of restroom and showers for the amount of bunks that we have, but when you think about, they, they can have a fire call where thirty of the members can show up on the scene, and I talked about that, everybody wants to shower within the hour by NFPA. That's where that sort of amount of shower room sort of comes into play as, as a necessity. So we don't want to, we don't want a line all the way down the corridor of people waiting to get cleaned up, so that allows them to clean, turn themselves over.
So these are single shower?
Yep, so it's a shower, toilet room, sink, it's kind of like what you would have at your house.
So it's not more efficient to have a, you know, locker room type shower, like a big shower?
It takes up a lot more space if we do that, yeah. Because, because then, instead of these being non-gender specific, we have to get into a man locker room, a shower room, and so on.
If you're, if you're planning for ten years out, then we'll, we'll have. If you're planning for 10 years out, then we'll, we'll have transgendered people who have all kinds of people.
So you need all the
Well, just to have them individually, unisex is so much more flexible and it solves so many problems if you're going to have 10 years from now.
It's the, it's the, it's the trend nationally in public safety facilities is the, is the real more gender neutral in a lot of these things.
Okay.
We've got our fitness room. We've got a small housekeeping room. So that's, that sort of laundry, building maintenance, things like that can all sort of, it's a catchall space and then a small IT room here at the end of the corridor.
How many people is the fitness room designed to accommodate working out at one time?
It's going to depend on the equipment that we program in there. But a room this size, you know, probably four comfortably.
What's the, do you have the square footage? I just remember Matt talking with you, the other Matt, sorry.
Yeah.
Firefighter Matt about what was in West, Westford. Yeah. Is this?
Let me take, I don't, we went back and forth on it. I can, give me a second. I can do a takeoff on that and tell you exactly.
I'm assuming also the, for the on-call people that need a place to work, the training room, when it's not being used as a place, you can just go sit down and have your laptop, your AirPods and
So those tables won't be locked to the floor.
Mm-hmm.
Right. So you can put them into the wall.
Yeah.
You can put them in a circle so that we have different form of training where it's not, you know, different, you know, different feel to it.
Right.
If you don't need privacy during your work, you can go there. If you need privacy.
Eight hundred.
Yep.
You can do a
Yeah.
Cause to me that's, that's a key thing is that this is a space that people can, especially if they're not from town, they can come here, they, they know they have a place to work. And if they need privacy, they, they know there's a clinical officer bunk they can, they can get into for sensitive calls and things.
Yep. So that's it for the plan. Any other questions?
I like it as well.
Chief, I'm curious to get your comments or thoughts.
This, I mean, I think for very little extra, we, we picked up a lot of our big concerns.
Okay.
And so I'm, I mean, this is something that will really work for the town, I think, for quite a few years. I mean, once you go full time, you know, whatever, there'll be some adjustments. The other thing is I think there are some spaces that if you think about, oh, we needed to increase something, there's space, other than bays, you can't really mess with those. But other than that programmatic space, you know, obviously if you needed to continue out here, you could think about it, you know, whatever. Now, I mean, we, we had the fiasco of thinking we could on this one, but hopefully we don't have that happen again. But, you know, there's, there's some, some breathing space. Do you have comments you want to make?
It's the best compromise I've seen so far. You know, I think some of the comments I had were 1,000 square feet per gym and it ended up at 800. I think I said six bunks and there's five. So I mean, it's, you know, it's taken some stuff away that, that I think would be nice to have, but you can't have it all. And like I said, I think this is the best, certainly the best layout I've seen.
Mm-hmm.
And incorporates a lot of what, what we like as, as space that's multi-use or multi-purpose or adaptable or, you know, you can use a space in certain number of ways. Like you were just saying with offices and the training room and all those other things. We can kind of make them adaptable to our needs now and our needs in five years and 10 years and 15 years. So as far as I can see, I think this is certainly the most, has the most flexibility built into it. And I think you can really see how hard Matt's worked on it.
So the, the number of vehicle bays is the right number? Or 10 or whatever it's going to be?
I think this is what we're going to get and I think we'll, we'll live with it.
Does that get everything inside? Remind me? No?
No. But it gets a lot of things inside. And the big question is, we don't really have a layout for the heat up building. And once we have that, then we'll have a better answer. That's next.
And on the elevator, the, I know we had some back and forth on that too. But is it required because this is now the possibility of the public coming up to the second floor to use? No?
It's required because it's being funded with public money.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, that was a
We've had that argument several times.
Is that ADA what's driving it?
Yeah.
Federal, you said, right? Federal?
Yeah.
But you can see we turn the elevator so that that, you know, you can go up that stair, you can come up that elevator and you're still not, you, you aren't, you aren't let into the private, private space.
Right, right.
I think is a good, a good change.
No pole then, huh?
No pole.
How's Matt getting the practices?
The fire, the fire service is slowly getting their, getting themselves out of the pole business. It's, it's only like one manufacturer anymore that makes it. They're in Massachusetts. But they're fairly, they're fairly dangerous. Especially if you look at, if you go to some of the fire departments downtown in Boston where they've got five of them that they have to get down.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You, yeah, a lot of, a lot of broken legs.
It was felt at the time to be faster? Is that, or cheaper?
It is much faster, yeah. But they also, there's other, so there's slides, there's running stairs where the stairs are made for like the cadence of somebody actually running down them. Slides are kind of the way, slides and chutes are the way that it's going. It's kind of like getting out of the airplane after, after some sort of issue. They take up a lot of space.
Yeah.
But
So I think in general, I think this is the size we need. And we're going to be looking at flow and oh, maybe move this here or there. But the size and whatever is not really going to change, I think.
Good. Mentioned last week when we reluctantly brought elevator back into the equation that obviously it allows for, this is just from my layman's view is a much better flow and layout than anything we were looking at as a single story. You also mentioned, yeah, you have the added expense of an elevator, but there may be some cost efficiencies in terms of construction. At a macro level, this layout, this design, this size, how does that compare to what we were looking at previously in terms of complexity? Are there any big wins or losses in terms of looking down the road at construction?
In terms of cost?
Cost, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think that the, so the less shovel you have to put in the ground, the better, especially on a site like this. So when we talked about multiple additions on multiple sides of the building, right? That's, that's multiple, in order to keep the, the fire department operational, it becomes a challenge for them to do all, to tack all that at the same time.
Right.
So we're talking about like, all right, we're going to, we're going to bring steel in, we're going to wreck the building, we're going to put a roof on it, we're going to close it in. Then we're going to move around to the other side of the building. We're going to bring steel in, we're going to put a roof on it, you know? And so those remobilization of trades adds a lot of cost and also extends your schedule. And every day that a contractor's on site, you're paying general conditions and general requirements that, that add up quite a bit over time. I don't have, I can't throw a number out there and tell you this is saving you X versus Y, but this is probably a little bit bigger gross square footage wise than we've shown you.
What's your, what's your square footage on this?
I haven't, I, I, I should have taken, I should have done a takeoff before I came and I apologize that I didn't. I, I think the reality is that we added the two stairs in the elevator. Those, those equate to around about 1,200 to 1,000 square feet of additional space. I, this is not 1,000 square feet bigger than the plans we've showed you previously. It's less than that. So we were able to gain efficiencies in the layout.
Yeah.
That allowed our net square footage to increase. So as our gross square footage.
And you can construct this while the front building is, is being used.
Continues to operate?
Yeah, for the most part. There, there, there certainly will be some time when we're dealing with the connections between the two buildings and, and there's going to be some electrical shutdowns and things like that. But for, for the most part, you know, I, I don't see a reason why a contractor wouldn't be able to work, work this.
You don't actually share a wall, right? You build a parallel wall. You do share a wall. So the, the back, the exterior back of the current building
Is this, is this great?
Is the interior of that.
I need to talk about an opening.
No, I, I know that. I know that. I mean, you're, you're, you're trying not to mess with the envelope of the current building to
Yeah. Probably, probably the biggest operational challenge I think we may have with this and with any scheme that we've proposed is at some point, we're going to get into an issue with the excavation around the radio tower and the conduits that are underground between the tower and this building. Those may need to get cut back and reinstalled at some point.
They run under, they're in that space right now?
It's right here.
Oh.
More or less. So that'll be a challenge. That might hamper radio communications temporarily, but there's, there's, I'm sure there's ways we can work around that and figure out a, look around. But the tower wasn't operational when it was getting built.
Just tell people, no emergencies.
I do not.
Yeah. That's, that's when all the emergencies happen.
Okay. So what's the, tell us about your vector timeline, like what would be next then? Community outreach is that what you're
I got one other design piece, you know, just an idea of what this could look like.
You mean the
For community outreach?
No, the exterior of the building.
Okay.
Oh, whoa, whoa. Okay.
Yeah. So we did, we did do a, a quick draft rendering. I want to, I want to, I always like to caveat it with like, you know, the first time we pull it out of the bag, this is just our best guess, just to get a reaction and see if we're even in the ballpark. So we did put together a sketch of what this might look like. So existing building to the left, you know, you can see where we're infilling the, the old, old red door. We're also infilling the existing entry. And then, and then trying to keep it really simple. I know it renders like this is like wood that's been, that's been stained or something like that. Our, our vision is to sort of reflect the, the finish at town hall. So it just, it didn't render the right color, but we would anticipate a siding clappard that's complementary to town hall. Getting, getting some windows here in the back, you know, because the, the entry to the building is set back on the site, giving a little bit of an entry canopy to it, getting a little bit of scale to the windows at the front so that it, that it identifies itself a little bit more. So you know where to go when you're the public coming out of the site. And then, and then the second floor, keeping it, keeping it pretty simple with an open gable end similar to the roof that you have on, on this building. And then a, a bit of a dormer with a monitor roof to it, bringing in some natural light into some of those, those higher spaces like the training room and the, the day and living room and fitness.
So you, you would neither have skylights nor solar panels?
We would have solar panels provisioned wherever they are feasible. So yeah. So I would, I would anticipate there would be conduit up in the eaves, up in the attic that you could, you could connect to, basically from the eve, the eve line of this dormer up to the, to the peak, you'd be able to put solar panels on it. And then the, some of the flat roof, the new flat roof, you'd be able to
Where is the new flat roof? Cause you have to, somebody put the RTUs on it.
The existing station, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll study that and, and we'll do conceptual layout and we can, we can show you what that solar capacity potential is.
But even solar aside, solar's peak is good for solar, but if you're mounting rooftop RTU, well, they are RTUs. If you're mounting rooftop units, then you need a flat space, right?
We do. And it, it depends, yeah. It, at the very least, we're going to have an energy recovery ventilator, probably a dedicated outdoor air system like a DAZU. Those are pretty big. They'll have to go on the roof somewhere. We try to gang those together and group them as much as we can along with fans and things like that. So that they take up this little bit of space and we save that little bit of space for
Brian, are you air con now?
I do, there are areas that are, in fact, we have two different, we have an old system and then I put in key pumps. And so that, the mini splits, which have been very efficient and very good for us. So yeah, that's, that's what we give. The west side of the, of what he rendered does have a flat space.
Okay.
If you notice, if his drawing, the upstairs wasn't as big as the downstairs.
Right.
So there's that.
Well, you have the top of the equipment bay, I guess. That's fine.
There is those kinds of spaces. This is, you know, we really haven't worked with this. And so we'll, again, like you said, this is a first draft.
Right. Looks good.
It looks good. Very attractive.
So the, and I can't remember, oh, what the, I can't remember exactly what the current fire station side looks like. But when you say match town hall, what, what's the current exterior of the fire station?
Red brick.
It's red brick.
So it's red brick. And then what he's showing there would probably be like a cement board.
Yep, exactly.
So the, the fourth door we have now, so you're losing, you're losing the ambulance bay is what you said?
Yes.
Which is not useful to you.
Seal.
Where that sealed off part is, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a little out of perspective. But it's a first thing. Cause it shows a single, well, it shows a single window upstairs. And in fact, that's a, you know, how long is that? It's 30 feet.
It's a what?
It's 30 feet wide or 40 feet. I mean,
What?
On the right, the left side, on the same, other time size, et cetera. I mean, this is
It, it goes a little deeper than what it's shown, I think.
This?
No, he means under the
Under the
The new addition.
The new addition.
Under the gable, that, that window on the second floor faces
It shows a single window as though it's just a narrow hallway up there. When in fact, it's
It's a bigger space. Yeah.
It's a much bigger space.
And it's, the gable end, the gable doesn't extend over the entire volume.
Oh, it doesn't.
There's, there's the sort of chimney element in the back here. And that's effectively where the stair is.
Ah.
And I would note that some of the second floor builds out over the bays. And because the bays are tall space, the second, the floor to floor between the first and second floor is, is rather high. So proportionally, that, that's why it, it has the height that it does because the second floor is
Higher.
Up here.
Yeah.
Instead of, instead of it being sort of halfway up.
It's tough. It's just an initial. Okay. Do you want, so for the purposes of tonight, you know, the question for the select board is, do we feel like we're, we're in that zone now where we can say, we're going to, we're going to bring something, you know, there's still some refinement, but is this close enough where we say we, we can bring something to special town meeting?
I mean, I like the design, I have to say. Seems like it definitely addresses some of the shortcomings of the prior.
Yep.
So, but the question is what, again, what level of fidelity do we feel we need to go to the town with in November? And what, how does that fit with the actions that have to take place? Like, so I'd like to hear, I like it. So great. But now what? Like community outreach and, but on the cost side, like what's that cycle look like?
So I need a, I need a few weeks to take what are this and the couple of floor plans and build out some conceptual set of scoping documents. So putting in some materiality, getting some dimensions from the plan, understanding what the wall construction is going to be. And then I would send that to the cost estimator. And it takes them, so we would send that to them in about two weeks.
Yeah.
And they committed to me that if I can get them documents by September 9th, that they'll get us a cost estimate by the end of, by the end of September.
Okay.
From there, I need to, I can't just go at the, you know, September 30th and say, here it is. I'm going to have to go through that. It's going to be, you know, 30 something pages of, of line items and vet that and make sure that their assumptions are correct. And then I have to take that cost estimate of the building and work that into a full project budget, which effectively would set, would, would, you know, between those things that, that will allow me to start scoping out the complexity that it'll be to develop the bid documents for it, which will allow me to set coordinate
And that's you or is that, were the guys we hired to be the construction managers?
CMS.
CMS.
Do they, they're part of that too, right? Or no?
Yep. Yeah. So they'll be, I'm, I'm, I'm sure they're going to look at the estimate and review it and, and provide their own comments.
I mean, what I'm used to is the architect takes it so far and then the construction manager does what you're saying, get trades to, but you're going to do that. You're saying
Well, we don't, there's no, so you have an owner's project manager. You don't have a construction manager yet.
Oh, okay.
So if you wanted a construction manager, typically in Massachusetts, you guys do it a little bit differently than the rest of the country. Construction manager at risk is jet master and law chapter 149A requires a waiver from the inspector general's office in order to do that.
We're not going to do that.
We're not doing that. So you're doing, okay.
So we would be doing, in, in that case, a chapter 149.
Sorry, it's a private
Project, which is a hard bid, easy bid. So we have to develop the bid documents. What fall town meeting is appropriating is the design funding in order to get us to a bid.
Which is 30, what percent is it? 30% of cost or what?
No, no.
That'd be great.
So you have, you'll have the architect's fees, the OPM fees for that. Rough order of magnitude, architects run anywhere from nine to 12% the cost of construction. OPMs Rough order of magnitude, architects run anywhere from nine to twelve percent, the cost of construction, OPMs are three to five percent of the cost of construction. You and I all work together. Yeah.
Something like that, so if it's.
Soft costs, all the soft costs which include.
I'm just saying, how much we, if it's a fifteen million dollar building, we're asking for a couple million bucks, it sounds like, right?
Yep.
About right?
Yeah.
And you'll have enough, so you feel like if you get the cost estimates back, the, the ninth, and then you run this thing to September thirtieth? That in the month you have left, you can get enough support materials to present a two million dollar ask, right?
Yep.
On a fifteen million.
That's the plan.
And so you, and so the outreach to the community would happen in October?
It would start in September, that's right.
Yeah.
How would it start in September if you don't have the, you're thinking you just go ahead with?
Well, you've got enough now to start doing that.
Well, there's, there's part, there's, there's two parts. There's, so we've talked about doing multiple community conversations.
Yeah.
One is, is offering tours of the existing fire station and talking through some of the, some of the limitations and the goals and maybe some high level view of, of what we're discussing, just so people can get familiar with the current state. We would certainly let people know of upcoming dates, so the second community conversation in October would be more about a presentation, including, uh, Tecton about the, the design that's solving for what we're doing. Talking through, you know, outreach, all the information, putting all the website stuff up. We can certainly, there's certainly a wealth of information we've already drawn to, to set the stage for what would be, um, in October, the, you know, a more refined concept and, and cost.
So you're, well, I don't know if we wanna get into the community engagement right now.
Couple minutes.
But I wanted to go back, sorry, to the, the exterior design and just say, um, from, again, I don't have a design background, but as I just look at it, as I'm thinking about myself as a resident, it, it, it looks a little, um, the front part of the building doesn't really fit with the new part of the building in the back. And I don't know if there's any way to, uh, try to, I don't know, take some element from the front part of the building and you include it in the back. I would just, I think visually.
I don't think it's important that it look like Town Hall. I mean.
Yeah, no.
Town Hall's no one's idea of a gorgeous building.
No.
Right. So I, I think you could, maybe that's a good point, right? So maybe it, anyway, I would, for my part.
Yeah, I would think it should reflect more on the current fire station.
Yeah, you'll get to that, that's all.
Well, I think, I think, so my, my, my response to that is, um, I think when we're looking at this from the standpoint of, of a campus, and you're, they, they are visually connected. They don't need to match. But I think there needs to be some sort of complimentary language between Town Hall and the fire station.
Okay.
Having said that, saying, let's, let's make the new building, uh, brick that matches the existing one. That's, you know, sixty year old brick. We're never gonna get anything that's gonna even remote a little bit closer to that. So we're trying to, so, you know, we've looked at other options too, where maybe we, we whitewash the existing brick and paint it out, or, you know, so we'll, we'll continue to refine.
When age is the best?
What age is?
In terms of maintenance, yeah.
Not age well?
Brick is like the, the lowest maintenance, lowest lifecycle cost material you can put on a building. Its upfront cost is more expensive.
And what you're, what you have in mind for the addition is?
Like fiber cement siding, like hardy plank?
And, yeah, and how does that, where does that come in the list of thing, of exteriors that are, you know, that last the longest?
Well, the, the, the fiber cement panels, so long as you, you know, every now and then, you probably have to touch them up with some paint, just like you would with, with wood. You know, you can get them prefinished, but when you get them prefinished, you see all the nails and, um, but they're made, they're, it's, it's a fiberglass reinforced cement product, so it, it will last decades.
Yeah.
Easily, yeah. It, it's not, it's not a maintenance item like a wood siding is gonna be. It's not gonna get chewed up by, by the weed eater like a vinyl siding is gonna be. It's, it's a long duration durable material.
Anyway, back to the general, I, I do think, looking at it as a, as its own unit, you know, both sections, it would be, I, I would, I would like to see something that tries to make them fit together a little more.
Sure.
I know, I, I totally understand your point about thinking of the center of town, you know, as a town campus, but we're, we're, we're not, the other things we may be building, like the, the police station, you know, we're not attempting to make that necessarily fit, or not building, but you know, the renovations we're doing there, and I know not much of it is exterior, but still, I guess, from my point of view, I think if we have a nice sign about the fire station that matches the sign that goes into Town Hall, that that's, that would, for, for people in town who are gonna be considering the price, that would be great, and it's not necessary to make it, you know, have an element from Town Hall, and it, it would be my own personal opinion.
Sure.
Can I ask a really simple, like, almost too basic question? Is this building fireproof?
Yeah, so, yeah, I can get into the technical aspects of it, but yeah, this will be a, what's considered a non-combustible construction.
Okay. I mean, that's, I mean, the irony would be the fire department, the new fire station goes up in flames.
There are, well, they do.
It's happened to several near us.
And it, it's, you know, just cause I'm saying it's non-combustible construction doesn't mean it can't burn. So it will, so that's, that's, that's always a risk, but, um, but we're not, we're not, we're not planning at this stage to wood frame it. Certainly could wood frame a firehouse.
I mean, I don't know anything about fire science, you guys are the pros, but the, I would think that the threat would not be from inside, it would be the roof, right?
Typically, it comes from.
A vehicle catching fire.
A, a vehicle, yeah. Something in the, something in the kitchen.
Oh.
You know, there's, there's, there's all sorts of reasons why it happens. But, but fire departments aren't immune to it, and the issue with, with a fire department, when it does catch fire, you're like, oh, great, they're already there. They're not. Because the fire department's on fire, so they can't just get their trucks out and put it out. You're calling another department to come and put it out.
Yeah.
So, yeah, go ahead.
So, yeah, I had a question on more on the, this, how it ties into the site plan in general. You have a cistern in there now, for, and you have a well, and you have all that. Does this all work with the infrastructure, or is that gonna have to change?
I would expect we would reuse our well, and I would expect we would end up with cistern for the fire protection.
So.
In addition to the cistern we have, but we haven't gotten, and that we've talked about, for instance, the base for that outbuilding that they're gonna build might just be a cistern for fire protection. I don't know, but we haven't, we haven't gotten that far.
But as far as the footprint of this design, does it, does it incorporate, or does it take over an existing cistern area or anything else that's, you know?
Takes over a fuel water separator that needs to go anyway. So we say, anywhere close, so that, that's gonna go away, and that's, that's about all it, it takes up.
Okay.
So for next steps, um, you're gonna refine stuff, do you, in terms of September ninth? Do, do we need them to come back? Do we wanna see a refined design? Do we wanna proceed?
I'm, I'm now pivoting to cost.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally comfortable with the interior floor plan at this point.
Yeah, and the exterior.
The exterior, I think, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can provide multiple options for the exterior for the next, for the ninth, for sure.
Okay, so maybe if that's worthwhile, we can look at that, or we could just circulate.
Cause will that make a difference to, sorry, will that make a difference to the cost estimator?
Yes.
Okay, so then you'll need a couple.
But you won't, you won't even have received the preliminary cost till the ninth, right?
We won't be delivering drives to the estimator till the ninth.
Yeah, so we don't get the preliminary cost till the thirtieth of September.
So you're saying we, we, on the ninth, we could weigh in on, is that the only open item? Like, are we the designer?
Well, I think, but by the ninth, it's like, it's gotta go out, so we can't.
So I don't, I mean.
We can't, and I, I would note, you won't get the estimate on the thirtieth. I will get it, but I need, I need time to review it and analyze it.
Right.
So you'll probably get it a week after that.
But you're gonna do some community outreach for aesthetics or functionality, or what is it you're seeking to learn from the?
So the, yeah, it's, it's not soliciting input, it's, it's starting to educate, educate and do outreach around.
Oh, okay, so saying this is what we're, okay, fine, so that's fine then. So I don't know that, so back to you.
Well, you got the design presentation in the beginning about, well, somewhere in October.
Summer of October, yeah.
And is that, Matt, is that realistic?
That's where you'd show a picture, you know? Everything up before that, we, you could.
Just more background and understanding.
Why we need a new fire department, what the, what the goals are.
But you'd be showing the floor plan then, the interior floor plan, as well as potentially what it might look like from the exterior, as well as potential cost?
Yeah.
On that conversation number two?
Conversation number two, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I think a video would be useful.
Yeah.
Yes, I do too.
We talked about, there'd probably be at least two videos in addition to the normal special town meeting videos. That would, one could focus on the existing station and do basically a tour, like we did. The next one, um, and Tecton does these all the time, you would, you would host a, a public session, that would certainly be recorded and made available. And then, and some kind of presentation around what's being proposed. So there'd be probably three or four videos addressing different aspects.
So, all right, so we're back to, but, we don't, we're not gonna get, like, what's the day you can come back and tell us, okay, within ten percent, this is the cost, I think it will cost?
The, uh, well, a week, let's say, let's say a week from September thirtieth.
Okay, what's our calendar say?
Yeah, and when are we?
That would be October.
The first October select board meeting?
Yep. I mean, you could certainly communicate it out.
No, I know, but we've got a model.
October fourteenth.
The first one's not till the fourteenth?
Well, that's when we're meeting, but that's kinda late, that's late.
That's really late, yeah.
We would need to meet on the seventh. I mean, the thing is, I guess what I, you know, then the burden sort of shifts to us. Right? We've gotta be able to make the case that we're not gonna drive everybody out of town with their tax records, because you gotta add this. Do we have a, Ryan, in your mind, is there a ballpark figure for DBW?
Yeah.
Like fifteen, like what's the?
We heard a number.
Do you have some number in your mind that's modeling?
They said it was like fourteen or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And.
So we're at thirty million, we have to present a, a plan of thirty million.
Right, even irrespective of this cost, David, I think we're at a point where the committees have done a lot of work to get us to this point, saying, we've evaluated this, and I think the select board hopefully is at this point, where we say, gosh, we've thoroughly looked at this, we've looked at Westford, we've looked at, you know, these other things, and we think this is the right thing for Carlisle. And so if that's the case, you know, we're, we're gonna have to support it because it's the right thing.
No, no, and we're, we're kind of already past that, Travis, like, we've already covered that, like, we, we agree, public safety, we even go back three, four years, right? Police station, fire station.
Right.
So we, we've done that. And then we really vetted, and thank you, Matt, for a lot of work, like, we really, I mean, I think we challenged a lot of things through this process, and we have a design now that people seem to like and that pros seem to like, so that's step, so it's the right thing to do, and they've taken the right approach, right? So that's done now. Now, we certainly are gonna pitch that, but now we have to say, oh, by the way, we're gonna do that again with DBW. And here's the total, and here's how it's gonna work financially.
So that conversation starts now with FinCom, and maybe we don't know the exact number, but we know it's, we know it's gonna be more than something and, and less than something.
Yeah, well, right, so I mean.
So we need to put together the big blocks and start making the case, and then when the actual more refined number comes in, we adjust accordingly.
Yeah, I mean, I'm worried, moving more towards twenty is what I'm worried, I'm hoping, not, but, you know.
So, all right, so, but I think that, that, that higher level discussion and of timing and sequencing and how are we gonna accommodate these large projects needs to start. Once we know, if we, what I'm hearing tonight, that conversation starts pretty much immediately. I'm gonna get with James and say, look, we gotta start blocking this out and, and, and figure out what the story is we're gonna tell, how we're gonna, how we're gonna work these, and what the tax impacts are gonna be. Okay.
Couple comments on that.
Yep.
Community engagement, um, I don't understand number three, cause it says location in person at the fire station. That's the end of October, training tools and response equipment, so what is that?
There was, uh, so one, one comment I had, in, in addition to the, um, the typical things you do, the thing I found most helpful was attending the, the training that they do where they, where they show all the equipment, how it's stationed, how it's. So if the opportunity existed between now, if they were doing another training session between now and special town meeting, to, to do a more intentional, invite people to that, do a more intentional video showing how the fire department works. And, um, that's even, you know, so, so that was exploring, again, just so people understand.
Yeah, see it, it would've been practice.
Yeah, cause when you see it in practice, you get a different lens on it.
Yeah.
People, people think that fire stations are big car garages, but there's, we've found through this process, there's much more that goes on. And also, the idea of how we have to transport water and what's entailed in that, I don't think people really.
Right.
So have you done, Brian, videos like that already?
Uh, not so much. We, when we do open houses, it's not, the little kids are not so interested in that.
Right.
And, yeah, so we, we need to come up with something that would be more effective. The, the space there is so small that it's a little bit hard to do it in that space, but we can look at.
But the school was, you know, anyway.
The school was what?
Well, they set up, what they did the last training was along there. Heck, there was huge sports going on at the time, but that's a, seeing it laid out there is something where you could publicize that, get people to show up, and then at least document it and make it available.
How often do you do that?
Well, every Wednesday night, we do a piece of it, putting all the pieces together like that, we do like twice a year. But we can, we can come up with whatever we need to come up with to, to do it and, and figure out a good space for it. We can, you know, go around the station with some stuff, exactly.
I'm not, I mean, we, we toured Westford, and that's close, and of course, we have Matt. It's not bad to show, I don't know if they would let us, but like, this is what it sort of can look like, right?
Sure, well, that'd be part of the presentation, it's showing the floor plan layout, but then maybe it's, maybe it's video or, or images of a modern fire station, whether it's Westford or another one, so people can see, okay, this is what, what that looks like. That would be part of conversation number two.
Um, my overall comment though is, so all of these are community events, right? And we've got three there, and, um, I'm thinking about, uh, some other things we've gone through that we're gonna be, um, discussing at the town meeting in November, and have you thought about making it so that community conversation number one, there are two of them at, at different times and different nights of the, days of the week, right? And similarly with conversation number two, that you're, so that you're making it, uh, possible for as many people as possible to go to one or the other.
Yep.
And then the other thing about the, the, the tour of the fire station, what's the, what's the maximum number of people that you could have show up for a tour? Are you thinking it would be sort of throughout the day, you've, on, I don't know, hourly? On the hour, there'd be a new tour starting? I mean, I'm just thinking, trying to think through, if you do, if there's a lot of interest, you could have a hundred people wanna do a tour, I don't know.
I think we'd do one sooner rather than later, have some kind of sign up. If we found immense demand, we'd start scheduling more. Cause it's, it's, is it two people or is it two hundred people? It's probably closer to two, but, you know.
And I think we just needed to publicize it for three year olds, or is it for, you know, sixty year olds? Cause it's a whole different world, and we, we've always, you wanna make sure the three year olds are happy, and that's not the goal of this.
This is not, yeah, this is.
And we just need to make sure that people understand what they're, what it is.
Which I think argues for really thinking about the publicity around this community conversation number one, because if it's, if it's not, my own opinion is if it's not housed within the larger picture of what we're talking about for a completed renovation and the potential cost, you're not gonna get as many people thinking about it, whereas if they, right, if they're starting to hear that, they will, you'll get more responses from folks, so just.
Yep.
Yeah. And I, are you gonna involve any other boards or committees in any of this? You know, planning board, ESC?
ESC, FinCom, MFC, yeah, yeah.
So they're gonna be getting educated and being supportive, so that at town meeting, they're gonna stand up and show support?
Yeah, well, ESC, MFC, FinCom have already been involved to this point, in terms of being on the apparatus committee, and, you know, ConsCom Planning Board haven't been as involved, but certainly we'll get them involved.
But just like we would say for any other warrant article, this is a big one, right? So even, and so we would wanna have
Yep.
those committees, boards formally.
Yep.
Vote to support it, yeah, if we can, if we can get that, yeah. I, and I would just say on the ESC part, the environmental sustainability committee, I didn't quite understand the comment about the solar panels, but I think it would be important to, to be clear that there is going to be, or if there's not, to be clear that there's not gonna be a significant ability to produce, uh, solar electricity.
And there's also like HVAC, you know.
Yeah, the other pieces, right.
And that was one of our goals in the RFP and the project is, you know, to be as green as possible.
Some people don't have the problem with spending the money, but they wanna see it applied to as many uses as possible. Do we need to be prepared to answer questions from people who want the community center and say, how many times a week can we use the meeting room, and how many times can we use the gym, and, I mean, is this, is this, is it gonna be a dedicated space, or is it gonna serve multiple purposes? And, I mean, is this, is this, is it gonna be a dedicated space, or is it gonna serve multiple purposes? Because people will wanna know what's in it for them first.
The gym is gonna be dedicated.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it'd only be that training room, meeting space that might, I don't know what you're thinking about availability for use by community groups?
Yeah, it wasn't really designed for that, and then the ability to open the other, the more flexible you make it, for us, it makes it less flexible for people.
I know, yeah, yeah, that's right.
We need to, but that's why we moved the elevator, and that's why we did, is so that there's that possibility.
Yeah.
But there's also not a lot of parking.
Right.
Right.
Well, we're, we're beyond our allotted time. You said there's an online comment?
Uh, Eric, yes.
Okay. Eric, are you out there? Do you wanna?
Yes, I just wanted to very quickly.
Just say your name, Eric, please.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, just state your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Eric Fallis, 105 Null Farm Road.
Thank you.
Speaking as both a member of the MFC and the ESC. The MFC, you know, already looks at different ways of looking at renewable energy, solar panels in particular, on facilities, and the ESC, along with the, the climate leader opportunity that the town has, and that the town staff, Sarah Wasserman in particular, are championing, provide a lot of opportunities for us to put renewables and, and, you know, lower carbon options into these new facilities. So that is already underway, and we'll just continue to maximize what we can do.
Yeah, so that would be obviously a good selling point to include in some of this publicity.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So we, I'll maybe, quick follow-up tomorrow, and then we'll plan on a lot sometime on the 9th.
Yep.
Any final steps, but otherwise, it sounds like we're, we're continuing to move forward, and I'll start the process on the, some of these other things we're talking about, and we'll have another call with Antonia to.
She's the community engagement person?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
She's good, and they do a lot of this, so it's.
Yeah.
So that might be useful, have her on the 9th.
Yeah. She, she volunteered to be here tonight, and I just said we had limited time, so probably not tonight, but that might be a good use of time on the 9th.
Now, Matt, will you be able to share this with, or provide the, your slides to the?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, great. Maybe to Ryan, and he can pass them on?
Yeah, I'll send him the link. It's public record now.
That'd be great, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
That's a lot of work in the last two weeks, so thank you, and thank you, Chief Deputy Chief, for, for working with Tecton and getting them that feedback.
Oh, you ended our meeting.
I, I went to sign off, and I hit end for all my X's.
Uh-oh.
Oh, no.
Can we relaunch?
Hopefully, we're through the meat of the meeting.
Right as you were complimenting us, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that even didn't get heard by the rest of the.
I, I, I didn't even know I had the controls to do that as a presenter.
Right. You did somewhat hosting privileges.
Well, let's move on to, no.
We're voting on it, right?
Yeah, right.
So really, how much is this gonna cost now?
Yeah.
I apologize for that, Ryan.
Oh, you're good.
Relaunch if no one can hear me.
You wanna turn back in?
Do you have, while, while we're waiting, I know there's this whole, the whole thing.
Recording in progress.
So is, is that anything that we need to think about for special town meeting? Or it sounds like we're just not.
Well, the two options that Brian told me they were considering, and I don't know if they've chosen one or the other, one is, he said there was some.
We're back. Okay.
Thank you, Matt, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
With that money, basically, we're reclaiming that money at the end of this month.
Yeah, yeah.
What do we got, Chair?
All right, we're back. So, closing of the special town meeting warrant, this is an important one.
Oh, Brian is on your call, too.
Brian, yeah.
Watterson.
Watterson. Okay, so with regard to closing of the, the warrant, Ryan, we have, what, four?
Five.
Five total. Do we just need to run through those and just motion to close the warrant? Or do we need to do anything particular?
You don't, you don't have to decide what's on the warrant right now, you're just saying no more.
Okay.
Okay.
Happy to do that.
I like that.
Very full day.
Two days.
Two days, yes.
And then maybe we can just spend a couple of minutes just going through the list, and we're gonna have more time on the 9th to talk about the different warrants. But you probably wanna give an update on yours.
Yes, but I'm just wondering, based on your question about the CCHS amenities building, if we should ask Brian whether, what the, what the outcome of the conversations have been at the regional level, Brian, and if there's some, is there anything that we need to know that might affect our town meeting in November?
I don't think there is anything related to the amenities building that's going to impact the Carlisle Town Meeting, just because I don't think Concord is going to be able to make decisions fast enough, coming off of last week's vote.
Okay. There's a lot going on in Concord right now.
Right.
With the CFO and everything else.
Right, so, okay, fair enough.
All right.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Of course.
So other than that, we have the articles we've, we've previously discussed, plus the CPC adjustment, and nothing else, correct?
Correct.
So does someone wanna make a motion to close the warrant?
I move to close the fall 2025 warrant.
Special town meeting scheduled for?
Scheduled for November 2nd, 2025.
Okay, it was the 2nd?
I'll second that.
All in favor, voice vote?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so I declare. All right. And then we had, just as a quick update, and we'll move along, but we had some back and forth with Wayne about the logistics of the one night and two nights, and he was basically saying, there's nothing we need to vote, per se, but when we communicate, we can, we can communicate our intended scheduling of things on the different nights.
Right, so we're meeting, we have our, we kinda took the summer off, but we're meeting Thursday, although Dr. Bernstein is conveniently out of town, but going somewhere fun? No, okay. Anyway, so we're gonna meet, I mean, the TMSC does not have really any authority.
Yep.
Select Board has the authority, but, you know, I wanna revisit just everything, but it seems, I wanna make sure that I capture the intention of the Select Board to convey, which to me is, we clear the deck for Sunday, like, it's all about MBTA, if we get done early, great. We don't, we stick it out till we get done, and then everything else gets parked on the Monday night, right?
Yep.
Now, the, is that, do I have that correctly then? Okay. And then the, the corollary is also some, and it may have even been Mark that suggested that, like, does it have to be at 7:00, like, on Monday?
Monday meeting.
Could we do like 6:30, you know, can we? So we don't go so late, because that's another dissatisfier, right? So what's, again, your sense of that? Because that's the kind of stuff we probably start talking about.
Off the cuff, I don't have any issue with that.
Okay. I mean, people don't.
I don't think there's any imaginable about.
Fewer commuters.
Yeah.
The old days, right? Like, people had to come home from work and this and that, they don't.
But, yeah, I don't think there's any reason we continue to do that, it's just, just how it's done, right?
Right, exactly, okay.
So.
All right, so I mean, we'll, we have a couple of things to do on Thursday, some of which goes back to the survey that we took and kind of refining, getting, remember, we did a baseline survey about what people wanted, and then we kinda did the post-event survey about how it was, and we're kinda still working through that data, so we, we will, over the next, you know, month or so, have some feedback to you for, like, what worked, what didn't, and what specifically can we apply to the fall town meeting, which, you know, by Wayne, certainly by Wayne's admission, it's an odd duck, right? It's not the classic meeting, so not all of the lessons will be directly applicable, but that's the point.
And when do we, and who, the whole logistics of the actual MBTA vote?
Well, that's really Wayne, and I think, you maybe were out of town, but I think Wayne was meeting with Ashley this week. Oh, it's coming this week, okay.
So they're gonna have a, do we, is that something we need to ultimately endorse, or they're gonna?
Well, I mean, it's the thousand people issue, right?
Yeah.
But even, even just, are, are there gonna be multiple articles?
You know, let's let Wayne, I think, he's got some ideas in mind, we need, we need him back, yes. Between now and town meeting, I think it should be, there should be clarity about certain things, like if there's, and some of it depends on planning board, are they gonna have two options or three options?
Yeah.
You know, I had suggested to him a couple of months ago, like, a methodology where he could, it's not really ranked choice voting, but you have to kinda get to a point where you can have a meaningful vote, and the clickers make it.
David, I think ranked choice voting makes nothing but good sense here.
Well, it's not for me, yeah, I mean, that's.
I know, it's up to Wayne.
I will say this, and I, it's been a while since I thought about it, but the clicker can be yes or no.
Yeah.
The clicker can also be one or two.
Right.
So you can use the clicker to down-select, which is a form of ranked choice voting. But if you have three, then the next question is, they do make clickers for three buttons.
Yeah, get the clicker for three buttons.
No, we may, because we only own like 200 clickers.
Oh.
Or 300.
Oh, yeah, we need.
We're gonna need 1,000 clickers, so we're gonna end up.
Can we rent clickers?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We are, we are gonna rent.
We've shared ours with Concord, and they.
Logistics were, were good.
So we don't, this, I just wanna make sure the Select Board, we're doing what we need to do to support the process.
We're borrowing clickers, we're working on the AV, you know, those like kid movie drive-in things, we're gonna get one for the gym, it's gonna be great.
Okay.
Just need to figure out what's going on the warrant soon.
Okay. So we close the warrant, we'll talk, we'll talk about some of the warrant articles next week.
I think you wanna start, Scott, sorry, you wanna start thinking about the sequencing of the Monday night articles?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the next meeting, we'll get into that.
Yeah, so, working back from town meeting, maybe it'd be helpful to give us another set of dates, you know, in terms of publishing stuff, and when language has to be finalized, and, you know, all of that stuff. Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah, my concern, we spend a lot of time focusing on MBTA, and I feel confident that the Planning Board will have plenty of Julie material to, you know, set up. I'm pretty good now with fire station and the planning camp. I have zero confidence in historic demolition bylaw, if they've thought through those issues. And I have only minor confidence that the CONSCOM's gonna be over.
For the wetlands.
These are complicated issues, those ones.
So we'll be meeting demo bylaw, they're coming in at the next meeting, so we can hear from them and ask those questions. And they, you know, they've been doing stuff on it, so we don't need to discuss that tonight. Let's, let's take that up at the next meeting.
Right, but I mean, that's, we have to help them socialize, because there's gonna be lots of issues. If we're not prepared, and we haven't, now, we collectively in the town, if we haven't done a good job at socializing, then we won't, we won't be there till midnight on Monday.
And with the wetlands bylaw, is Megan gonna be working with CONSCOM on that? Will she be, or is she gonna be helping to make that happen and be understandable and?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well.
Is she gonna be the face of it?
She's, she's, you know, new, but I think she ought to be playing a significant role with CONSCOM in terms of getting more organized, right, and practicing, and, you know, all of that. But I, you know, I know that's, you're.
Yes.
You're more responsible on that part.
I think the strongest, the strongest tool the Select Board has is your recommendation power. So if you're uncomfortable recommending something without X, Y, and Z happening, I would communicate that to these boards now.
Okay.
So if you're not gonna recommend it, if CONSCOM hasn't done any, in your opinion, outreach, then I would tell them now and get them to do it, otherwise, us as staff are also waiting for these things, because we have to write the warrant articles and do the podcast.
And don't, you know, don't forget.
Who's the liaison to CONSCOM? That's me.
No, but let's not forget that the closing of the warrant means there's no new articles, but it doesn't mean we can't bring some old articles, if we don't think they're ready.
Yeah.
And again, Dr. Bernstein, I remember talking to you about this a few months ago, like, what is the urgency of those two bills? MBTA has a deadline.
Yep.
And we have a pretty good self-imposed deadline on the fire station.
Yep.
Yeah.
Like, what's the urgency of the other two?
Let's get into that next meeting.
I just wanna, you know, be prepared to challenge if they're not ready.
Yep.
It doesn't mean bye-bye. I think it'd be better to be ready for spring with a Select Board endorsement.
They have one kick at the can.
Right, than to rush it and don't get the endorsement.
They have one kick at the can, and if you don't pass it, you're not gonna be coming back for a while, so.
That's right.
Take your shot.
Right.
Well, shall I check in with George?
Check in with George.
The Chair of CONSCOM.
I mean, and we both had conversations with.
Get some kind of information back from him about what they're planning.
Yep.
And then I can just provide that to you, and then maybe at our next meeting, we need to give direction?
Yep, we'll talk about that tomorrow, what we ask of people next week, because we can ask them to, come, give us the quick blurb for CONSCOM, give us your outreach plan.
Right.
All that stuff.
The, you know, Wayne, Wayne is, Wayne's advice, and you can convey that to George and the Historical Commission Chair, what they could do to help themselves is either ask, or in their own mind, think of the most articulate reasons against what they're, there's this myopia, like, I gotta give you all the pros. Somebody else should come up with the anties, and that's wrong.
Yep.
They should actually come up with the best reasons to say no, and even if they ask people who are against it, and have the counterargument ready for the no.
Yep.
I mean, that's, that's a big part of, I think, these contentious issues, so that's my advice.
All right, let's move along. Town Administrator Report?
Yes. Barney, for your conversation, the, by far and away, the most comments I'm getting from everybody is about land use. So the idea that these wouldn't be highly contentious issues at town meeting, especially with the crowd that's coming, is, once the public knows that these are out there and the warrant's published, it's gonna be.
They're gonna be so burnt out.
Land use, you're including, you mean?
Just the attention on the land use bylaws and processes right now is so high.
Right.
That we need to get released.
So you're talking about the wetlands bylaw?
And the historical.
And demo delay. Okay, that, you're considering that land use, got it? Okay.
I have no idea.
All right, all right.
Who is the liaison to HISCOM?
I am.
You are, okay. All right.
Yep.
We can work on that, okay.
So a few important things in here, I know it's late, but I do wanna convey some information to you in my Town Administrator Report. We had a couple great development days, so first, the town staff had a development day on the 19th. This was my second day back, and it was very energizing. We did close town hall, and we appreciate that space to engage our staff in both mandatory training. We did some tours of the town facilities, which we took a play from the Select Board there, and then also did some personal development training. So I thought the staff got a lot out of it, they had a lot of suggestions for the next year, and we're hoping to make it an annual thing. We also had our annual volunteer training event, about 20 or so folks attended. We, as always, gave them a strong mix of things to think about and some training. We would like to have more people come, especially members of boards who've been on it for a while, who wanna learn more about the town, and I, we think the best way to do that is, is through you and other volunteers to socialize the need to understand the town structures. And we can put together whatever is the best vehicle for that for them as well, but having informed volunteers helps everybody.
Can I just make one comment there, though, if I might? I think, having, I was at the training, and I think, and because I've been on the board for a while, and so have liaised with a lot of different committees, I think a piece that we wanna figure out a way to offer to volunteers, particularly the Chairs and Vice Chairs, is more of the deep dive into, how do you set up an agenda, how do you run a good meeting, what, you know, how does open meeting law affect this? You know, what about documents that you're providing? You know, how do you, what's your packet, do you have a packet, and what's it look like? There are a lot of details that some of the Chairs that I've seen in action really don't know, or don't have any training to sort of, in, don't necessarily have the instinct of how to manage, you know, a meeting, particularly if it gets at all controversial.
It's a great point, and forgive the military bluntness, but the people who need that training don't come to the training.
Right, but what if we targeted, yeah, but what if we did a targeted training?
For Chairs.
Yeah, Chairs and Vice, Chairs and Vice Chairs. And we would say, before, you know, they get elected, one of the requirements is, you gotta come to this training.
Yeah, I, I support that.
Or maybe you call it a workshop, you know, so it doesn't discuss.
Professional development.
Okay.
From Aubrey, in our human resources side, you heard tonight that Sam Fisher is our newest DBW driver and laborer with a tremendous amount of skills that we're excited to add to the team. From Aubrey and our human resources side, you heard tonight that Sam Fisher is our newest DVW driver and laborer with a tremendous amount of skills that we're excited to add to the team. We had more than 40 applications for the assistant town clerk position and have two very strong candidates, if, if we haven't selected one already. So we're gonna be moving forward with that. And our new finance and HR assistant, speaking of, of people that we recruited, Retaniso has started, has been a great addition to the team. She brings a lot of experience and new eyes to things, so part of this, the stuff you heard tonight, Retan is gonna be helping with us quite a bit and, and adds a lot of power to our HR team. For department updates and information, both of your public safety chiefs are entering the third year of their contract. So I'd like to know from the board if you would like me to bring a first draft of offers, or if you want to assign a select board member to work with me on this contract.
I would prefer the latter if that doesn't have to be done in an open meeting.
Then I will select someone to work with me in a working group with the, with the chiefs.
Well, I gave my opinion, I didn't hear. Other people should give their opinion. It was just my opinion, it wasn't the select board opinion.
You're not expecting either negotiation to be contentious, right?
I'm not.
No, 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 but benchmarking, you know, there's stuff that's better done.
And I think with these two, we, yeah, it makes sense for a select board member to be involved.
Then I'll, I'll pick one.
Yep.
Yeah, great.
I'll pick one of you out of the hat. Finance committee, you should be tracking their planning process, they're going through five-year forecasts, MBTA scenario impacts and the capital plan. All that stuff's gonna be coming to you before town meeting, which will be good information. Thanks to Sarah and sustainability and the MFC, we got a $15,000 Green Communities grant for the brick building.
Awesome.
I also need some feedback from you tonight about our charging fee trial for, for the EVs. So this is an idling fee.
Hmm.
Because our initial maintenance contracts are expiring, the cost to run these is going up, so we're looking to test drive, pun intended, a, uh, idling fee at the chargers. It's just a simple.
You mean if you're.
$1.80 an hour.
Right.
No, I agree, yeah, an idling fee.
Meaning if you've, if you've, if you're fully charged, then you need to move your car to let somebody else, that's idling, once, once you're fully charged.
So we wanna test it out to see what the impacts would be and then.
Standard.
Yep.
We would assign a higher or lower fee depending on the.
How did you come up with the six hours?
Sarah did a, in her working group, did a great survey of the local areas and what's done nationally and locally, and that was the recommended number. It's also to keep people from parking there.
She put together, right.
Travis, in the, in the packet, there was a very ni, you're asking why the six hours?
Yeah, well, she said because of the school and the, the teachers could use it, and it would be, but I thought they're working more than six hours, so it's like, you get to.
You just cut it off.
Yeah, you get.
So close.
You know, and I just wanted.
Six cents.
Buck eighty while three cents a second or minute, right?
Three, well, a buck eighty after an hour.
Right.
And if, I think they're one hour short, so we're gonna be collecting a dollar eighty each day.
Right.
From the teachers.
Is that enough to move the needle and to, for someone to move their car? I don't know. I thought it was great that you're trying it. I think this is good government.
Let them trial and figure it out.
Exactly, exactly.
Do we know how they pay? It's, it's just through charge point, right? Everything's all, okay.
I've used it myself, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Don't park there.
I think that's fine, as long, whatever keeps it solvent and not at cost.
Yeah, they should just.
The money's incredibly small, right?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a few hundred bucks.
Yeah, I still don't wanna lose any.
Why don't you charge them a thousand dollars? We need money for the fire.
Don't tell them, just get the bill one day.
All right, I have taken the feedback, and we will, we will do this trial, and we'll keep you updated on it. A lot, a lot of important updates here for your capital and building projects. The elevator modernization project, we both won and lost the bid protest. The question about the maintenance plan in the bid was thrown out as frivolous. The second part of the claim, it was upheld that our subbid was not necessary, but we, the architect couldn't document their process properly, so they didn't receive the documents. So they said if, if we had received the documents, then we would have upheld your bid, but we didn't. We talked to the architect about why, and that's the best I have for you. So we're gonna rebid the elevator project. We already communicated to the contractor, and they said they're gonna submit another bid. And notified all the bidders, and we're gonna rebid the project. So more to come on the elevator project. I do think that this actually makes the project more competitive, so it might work out to our advantage.
They're gonna have to sharpen their pencils when they come back.
In terms of lower costs. It was an interesting process to go through, and I fully do not agree with the decision that was made. I think it just hurts towns, especially small towns, but they have plenty of money to make up fake protests and submit them. That's my true feeling on it. The brick building, HVAC, we had a successful bid opening, and it is lower than the $70,000 that we had budgeted for this project, so we'll be moving forward. This is half coming from the MFC and half coming from the REC, the RECOM. And that will pair nicely with the insulation from the Green Communities grant to make a more energy-efficient and comfortable building. Town Hall bathroom renovations, you know, we need to put this back out to bid. We're waiting for the schools to open, and our facilities department have a little capacity to help us build a new scope, and then we'll get this project back out. Gretchen's been working really hard with Gordon and the cemetery committee to start implementing the cemetery mapping and, and software. That's probably gonna go through the winter, and then we'll see a lot of this work come into play in the spring. It's a lot of legwork and prep work that has to go into the mapping, and then we'll be able to, to implement the software. And we awarded our contract for the supplemental road maintenance that I mentioned to you the last time I met with you over a month ago. And they are meeting with us tomorrow to go over the timeline, so we'll have that report for you at your next meeting. Additionally, the same company, Lozaro, won the Bantha Davis track rehabilitation. That came in below bid as well. That's the first time I've given you a report where two things came in under bid.
Let's keep the streak going.
Is that paving the Bantha parking lot or the?
The track, the rehab of the track.
But it's not paving, right?
It's paved now.
It's paved, yeah.
The, uh, quarter mile track, I believe, is being repaved.
Okay.
The hydrologic studies at Grino and Cranberry are complete. We're waiting for those final reports. That will inform some pretty timely and necessary repairs of Grino and the implementation of boards and water control, I'm sorry. I have that reversed, at Cranberry and at Grino, the management of the water. And we're tying Megan into this, so she can take it over, so I don't have to deal with it anymore, except from a management perspective. And then I've been working with Barney and others to push forward the Boghouse Affordable Housing Feasibility Study. This is really gonna ramp up after town meeting, as a lot of the players are focused on the land use side of the MBTA, understandably. Want to make sure that we can be ready to continue to move forward with that after town meeting. All right, building construction projects. I do have an update for the library renovation. So there's, it's really four projects in one. It's an elevator project. It's a expansion of the mechanical room project. It is a library coils project, and it is a renovation project. And all of those things were done in silos, so we're squeezing them all together and having conversations about um, how that can, can become one project with many alternate bids. It has some complications with the various designers and whether or not we wanna pay extra money to make it under one design umbrella or continue to make it complicated. But I'll have an update for you when all of the committees involved make a decision on Thursday, which is two days from now. Okay, police station renovation. The Board of Health hosted a meeting to bring everybody into, in the room about the septic system. And after all the, the talk was done, the septic was approved, and the permit has been issued with a notice to proceed to APC construction. So the room, assuming that it passes the CONSCOM, because there was a, a box added to the plan that needs to be approved that does not appear to be controversial. If they approve that this week, then September 8th is when construction will start. The first thing the board should really know about is that is a contaminated site, so we hired a LSP to help us with the removal of the dirt for the garage, the sally port, and the septic system. They're gonna do a test pit, and then as the dirt comes up, they gotta test it. If the dirt is pretty good, we're okay. If it's really bad, then we're gonna have to stop the project and figure that out. And that could be the first real major hurdle.
Yeah.
Most, most of our indications are that the dirt is contaminated, but not to the point where it's.
Is there, do we have contingency money for soil removal and so forth?
We have some.
Is this, the contamination would have come from the gas station that was across the street?
Yeah, 30 or 40 years ago.
Okay.
So what hap, I'm really simplifying it a lot, but what happened was they started to fix it, and they were like, nope, and then they paved over it, and now we're opening that back up.
Okay.
So that's, once we figure that out, then we'll have a really good idea of where that project is in terms of contingency. And then fire station renovation, you talked about that a lot tonight. I just wanna throw some things out, not for discussion, but for you to think about for your next meeting. So, um, you have an election that's gonna be in here that needs to be part of that communications plan because of the dead exclusion vote that you need to take.
Right.
Yep.
CMS needs to be re-involved at some point, so once you finalize the design, I'm suggesting that we bring the OPM back in to start managing overall process. And I would highly recommend that select board appoint a committee to guide this project once you're cool with the design, so that it's no longer just your function, but given, so that the detailed work can really begin, uh, 'cause I don't think you'll have time to do that.
So like a volunteer committee, like the, we had for the fire, for the police station?
I think it's really smart of the select board, pick the design, but once you're.
Yes, got you, got you.
Pass off the detail work to a committee.
Okay.
Uh, some upcoming discussions, we talked about fall town meeting and the, and the big five articles. Um, MCRS will come present to you at some point, and, um, you'll evaluate me at some point, but you, those are things you know. Two approval notifications that we have to give you, one for the Carlisle Democratic Town Committee's annual picnic that has come and gone, that sign. And then the ride-run-for-live sign will be coming up in September. Lastly, but most importantly, I'd like to recognize some staff members. So John Mativier, our excellent building commissioner, deserves tremendous amount of credit for serving as the acting conservation administrator for more than six months. He said he would do it for a month for the town, and he ended up doing it for six. His immediate expertise and his ability to learn allowed the commission to continue their important work and hire a new administrator without a disruption in service. And his knowledge and his relationship with Sylvia also helped to make sure that transition went smooth and really bridged the gap. So he's done this before. He was the planning administrator for a while, and it allowed that bridge to Julie to happen. So John's versatility and his commitment to the town, I don't think it can be said enough. There's very few professionals that are willing to do that, especially for, you know, very little extra pay and a lot of time, so I'd like to thank him. I'd like to thank Aubrey and Gretchen for stepping up while I was gone, playing, role-playing army in the woods and shooting artillery. Uh, they kept projects going, they kept me informed, but did almost everything to, including organizing professional development day and that voluntary training without me. So that's, uh, really important, and we just have a high-quality staff. Also, Talen from the library and Chief Amendola helped with building tours, issued library cards, and Steve helped us facilitate that professional development day, so everybody chipped in. And lastly, Mark Schofield. Chief Amendola and I wanna thank Mark for his 42 years of service with the Carlisle Police Department. He served as a communication supervisor, a special police officer, and last, or two years ago, received a commendation bar for a lifesaving award. Um, thank you for your service. Forty-two years is a lot. The police station reached out for, for other, um, police stuff when they say goodbye to their people. And I, I know that's on the, underway, including a gift, so I hope.
Good.
He enjoys his next chapter, and forty years is a long time to do anything. And there are some meetings coming up. You have, I think, five in a row.
Sorry about that, folks.
Um, a busy agenda coming up next, which a draft of it is in your packet. So unless you have any questions, that is my report.
So very quickly on that, September 2nd, Tuesday, is the appointment for the trustees. Right now, four candidates has been, I believe, reduced to three candidates.
The trustees of the library?
Yeah.
You have to meet on that, on the 2nd.
On the 2nd, and it's, it's.
Is that in our calendars? Okay.
So that was just, we just finalized the date. Um, I'm, I'm guessing that will be about an hour.
Like at 7:00?
7:00 in, at Gleason in Hollis Room. It's gonna be in-person only.
Library trustees.
Then we have the dog hearing.
Yeah, the dog hearing.
On the 16th. Somewhere in here, there will be a planning board, uh, appointment meeting. We don't have a date on yet. I think the last update from Gretchen was there had only been one applicant or volunteer, so they were gonna continue to advertise that post-summer, just given how slow things have been and, and the mosquitoes' publishing schedule. So I don't have a date on that. It's most likely gonna be end of September, early October somewhere, but that is yet to be determined.
And we also, oops, sorry.
No, a lot, just a lot of, a lot of these appointments this year.
Yeah. And we also, tonight, when we're looking at the, um, outreach schedule for the fire station renovation, we said, uh, October 14th might be too late.
I think we should move the 14th to the 7th.
You, like, move the regular select board meeting to, maybe, we might need a regular select board meeting on the 7th instead of the 14th.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not have in addition, just move it up a week, given special town meeting.
What's GL, GPL?
Gleason Public.
Gleason Public Library.
Oh, September 2nd, I think so, not September 2nd.
September 2nd.
September.
Tuesday.
Like next week.
Like next week.
Yes.
Just remind, it's not gonna be here, it's gonna be.
Yeah, I'm gonna send information out about this. It's gonna be in Hollis Room at the library.
Okay.
They have two trustees, we have five select board members, so, um.
But they're gonna present candidates or a candidate?
They have three candidates currently that we will, we, we will use the same process as the school committee. They've received letters with three questions that will be asked.
But is this agenda just that item?
That's it. It's a joint.
Like we did for the school committee.
But if we're meeting, do you wanna do anything else?
Not really.
No.
David's like, yeah.
I'm trying to knock these things off, like, if we have.
Well, what's going on? The 9th is a regular meeting, right?
Yeah, the 9th is a regular meeting. This is just, this is just a.
16th is.
This is just 'cause we have to.
This is 'cause we have to, and, and we originally had it slotted into a select board meeting when we thought it was one candidate in 15 minutes, and we couldn't fit it into our agenda. And they weren't available on the 9th.
Sorry.
But we're, we're, we're considering changing the October 14th to October 7?
Let's discuss that tomorrow as well.
Yeah, and just make sure there's not something else.
Yeah, that's a tight schedule. It's boom, boom, boom. Yeah, I hear you, Travis. What else can we, yeah, but what else?
If you can't make one of the, especially like the dog hearing or the, these are all important, but as long as we get appointment, quorum.
Trustee wants to go to the dog here. You cannot.
She has to go to the trustee one.
Why's that?
Because she's our, she's, she's got the, and you're, you've got the most experienced.
You cannot be a Carlisle Select Board person.
And not go to a dog here.
That's true.
You will, you will have to bring us coffee for like the next year.
All right. Um.
Okay.
So more on that. I'll send out an email with, with all the specifics and reminders. Review of warrants and minutes, there were, there were two warrants and minutes from August 11th and 12th. Did people have a chance to review?
They look good to me.
Okay, so want to make a motion on those?
I was in that, the one, the fire station.
That's right.
August 11th, oh, so we'd wanna.
You can either, Bernie.
Right.
Just do them, let's just do them separately since we have differing attendants.
Whoever was on the tour.
August 11th was the tour, right? The fire station tour that you guys, so, so.
Move to accept the minutes from August 11th, right?
I would second.
Okay, let's do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Arnold.
Modell.
Arnold and Modell abstain. Okay, it passes. Let's do the August 12th minutes. That was a regular select board meeting.
I'm moved to accept the August 12th minutes as presented.
Second.
Do a voice vote again, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Very good. Liaison reports. I know we're running late. Any key items?
We did have a, um, CAT meeting, a car, you know, Affordable Trust meeting, I'm trying to remember what we covered, but I think we're pretty much focused now on the Boghouse and seeing if we can make that work.
Okay.
And, um, I think what's, John's gonna reach out to you at some point, probably, to get some guidance on that.
Okay.
And quick report on the Land Stewardship Committee. Um, they have created a subcommittee that's going to, um, take a closer look at the, uh, documents that, that went with the Woodward license to, for the, um, flower farmer. I'm not doing it justice, it's more than flower farming, but, um, and so that, uh, committee, subcommittee is going to meet probably three, four times over the next month or so to try to, um, dig into some of the issues that have been raised. And they'll include allowing, you know, bringing in various stakeholders to give them input on some of their concerns about the, the specifics of the documents that outline what they can and can't do.
But this is subcommittee of LSC or a subcommittee of CONSCOM?
Of LSC, but they are going to, um.
Present to CONSCOM?
Present it to CONSCOM because they feel like they, yeah, they need to get the approval. We're, we're trying to promote the idea that they don't, you know, that they need to do that, yes.
Okay.
Uh, just a quick update on the financial assistance, um, working group that we're forming, just to draw up a framework. So at our last meeting, you might remember that we agreed that.